Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the City of Covington. Special meeting for our collective workshop on Saturday, October twenty ninth. In compliance with state law, city, local, special, and regular meetings are being held in a hybrid format, with in-person, telephonic, and virtual offices for public viewing and participation. Today, this is just an informal meeting. We are going to be discussing our budget for two thousand twenty-three. And with that, we call this meeting to order, and I'll look for approved agenda and change to the agenda. Second, then move in second to approve the agenda written. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes, the agenda has been approved. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our illustrious signature.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you feel the energy in here?
Yeah.
Like, you know, it's exciting to get on a Saturday morning and talk budget. I think it's fantastic.
I'm impressed with the crowd.
Yeah, we got a great, yeah, good crowd today, so.
I'm always ready to start.
Yeah. So, once we get this presentation out there, I'll start rolling through it. But before, I just want to thank our team. And I say our team because it's not a my team or your team. It's really our team. Just exceptional, like, it really is. They put together wonderful budget requests. They put a lot of good time and thought to tie it to our strategic plan, tie it to the council's priorities, and, and mostly, they don't get too mad at me for some of the stuff that I don't fund. So, that's really appreciated. And then Casey and her team just did an awesome, amazing job. They really are, they really are rock stars. So, thanks, everybody. And then, thanks to the council, always having really thoughtful deliberations on, on these budgets. So, so we will get to it, then. Some of the budget strategies that were really a focus of this for two thousand twenty-three budget was to increase public safety investment by adding a new officer. We know that's a council priority. And so, we, we put one additional new officer in for two thousand twenty-three to fund some infrastructure improvements, fund the equipment needs, and to increase staff into appropriate service levels. You know, during the pandemic, we, we had a hiring freeze, so we kept a lot of positions vacant. We've been filling those up and still hope to be able to continue to staff the office to where we need to be for next year. So, we'll go through each department individually now. This is the executive department. So, and for those who are new to this, we'll do a comparative budget. It's not everything in there, but some of the main, main expenses. So, you can see not a whole lot of difference there. There's the increase in salary and wages to the the four point four percent COLA. There's also a minor increase for the increase in employee hours that they work for next year, so you can see those in there. And then, under other services and charges, that increase is due to voter registration for the county. Any questions on that side, or you want me to stop each time and ask, or just if you have something? Shout out, we'll do it that way. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay. What's that? Yeah, I know, I hear you. It, it's because we have, we'll, that will be a question. So, in personnel, and I can see a few changes there. So, the difference between the budget and estimated actuals for salaries is, who wants to remember Darren Moon? So, he worked part of this year and then retired. And so, we budgeted for him when he retired, so the estimated actuals, actuals are down. More minor increases in two thousand twenty-three, again for the COLA. And then, our new Darren, the care specialist, there's some increase in salary in there. Then we go to the executive decision cards that were funded. So, beautification projects in downtown, this is a fifty thousand dollar decision card. And this was really, there's not a whole lot of plans. I wanted to stick fifty thousand in there with the hopes that, you know, we can come up with things we talked about, maybe light poles, if you get banners, or, okay, can do that kind of stuff. But really, my hope is that this is seed money. And, and the business meeting we held for our downtown association on Thursday night, part of what we talked about there was our downtown businesses putting in matching to the, to the city projects that we do with our downtown court. And that seemed to go over well. We'll, we'll see when it gets to it. But that's the hope. That's really seed money that drives the beautification.
I have a question about this, you know, just because it did specifically change to the seventy-second in the decision card. Would it be limited to that, just because some of our businesses and our, obviously, our residents live on some of the other archivials and things like one eighty of Blacks Road?
Right. No, it's not. It can be whatever the council wants. I threw that in there because I wanted it to be pretty focused to our downtown court, because it was with the businesses we're going to reach out to.
Right, right.
You know, but whatever council.
Again, I have a question. And I, I see this going, the question about ongoing, five thousand ongoing, is that an annual?
That's an annual cost for maintenance replacement of batteries.
Okay, so throughout all of the budget, where we see ongoing that?
Good. And then, we've got an all-in-one platform for managing public records requests. This is something that Krista and Johnny have been looking into quite a bit. Our public records requests continue to increase, and that's quite a bit of staff time. And so, this hopefully will dramatically increase the amount of staff time that's needed to fill public records requests. Now, our office technician, too, we're increasing that position from the half-time to point seven-five, and that's still, we're still under in the executive department staffing that we were prior to the pandemic, but this increases up to the.
How much staffed is total during the pandemic?
That's a really good question. So, it's just executive department?
Sure.
So, in executive department, there was Darren and, yeah, and a full-time receptionist. And we haven't been doing a full-time reception. And we haven't replaced Darren's position. So, we moved those num, those amount of available hours around a little differently, but there's still a maybe.
Maybe we can go department-wide, because I know that would be impossible to say common duties, but I'm, I'm really curious, like.
I can tell you, if you come to an all-staff meeting now, it looks a lot different.
Percentage?
Pretty incredible.
Ten?
Any ideas how many? Yeah. But this year, we hired. There's a couple, there's a couple that aren't. We, we, I'd have to pull those numbers under any type of short.
That's okay.
But, yeah. What, what's amazing, this is a little bit of a side note, is, is the fit that bring on a, a large percentage of people on, and just how well they're fitting in. And this year, I've been meeting individuals with each of our new employees that have come on in the last year, year and a half. And it's just amazing. It's really a shout-out to this leadership team. They just rave about, like, I can't believe this is real, like, is this a real organization? Like, when's, when's the, when's the gig? That kind of stuff, and, and, and just comments about, about the leadership team and, and their, their support and, and growth that people are able to get here. That, that's, that's like awesome to bring on a good chunk of people and have that momentum. They're just in, in step. So, yeah, we're fortunate enough that. So, personnel, we've got a salary survey. We typically do that every five years. So, that five years is up. That really kind of, there's several comparable cities, you know, that we compare with. We do a, a survey to see kind of where we are in line with, with the region. No significant future budget issues to speak of in executive. So, council?
Yeah. I don't know if you had this on your slide or not, but in our presentation, you've got a comparative budget to special projects.
Oh, sorry, I took that out. Well, that's later on in the morning down the side. I'll go to special projects.
Okay.
Thanks for putting that out, Jeff.
Can I ask a quick question for that one-time platform for managing public records? I know that that is a, quite an expensive thing. Our staff has to go through labor hours. I imagine that you would expect the return on investment, like, is this eighty-three ninety ongoing? Is that taking away what we're saving?
So, that was my exact question when that was submitted. What's our, our line? Like, how many hours does that save? And that's something that Joni and Krista really got into. And it does save a significant amount of Krista and specifically Joni's time.
So, by doing it, it's probably actually, we're probably gaining.
Yes.
It's not necessarily, it's possible to system, but we're actually.
Right. So, so, and, and it also brings up time that Joni's having to spend on public records requests, and she can spend it on court.
I would be curious to see what that number is.
Sure. I, I think we put some of it in the decision card, right?
Yeah, it's actually.
And can I also add that it increases public transparency?
Yeah.
Then it would be fully transparent on the city website of what those public records requests are, and then everyone can access all those.
Yeah, which, which is nice, because if someone says, here's a request, right, well, we have that a month ago.
And I, Sean, I think it's a great idea. And I know that's what the beds are doing. They get these records requests, and then they just respond and put everything up online. So, that, when they get fifty of the same one, they just say, your, your documents are there. So, yeah.
I'm just wondering, am I the only one going crazy hearing this feedback?
Yeah, I know, it is a little bit. Maybe turn the, turn the mics down.
And.
Chris, you're doing that.
Yeah. Can you tell me about a stage art and certification?
Yeah, it's, it's a certification for human resources professionals to, to really advance in their profession. That's something they need. So, that's what we're doing there, and HR stuff.
Okay.
Okay, council, court, legal, and central. These are exciting departments. So, I'll just go through this a little bit. This is the city council's budget. You know, most of that is those operating transfers out. So, that's four thousand going to town center. We've got just over twenty thousand towards the public art, as you know, we funded a million dollars for capita. And this is for the two thousand twenty-two numbers. One point one million that went out for Soco Park, and then three hundred fifty-four for Welcome Park, and the transfer of sixty thousand to the Streets Fund. So, for two thousand twenty-three, you see that number drastically decreases. That's the twenty-one thousand two hundred for the Public Art Fund, and then ten thousand transferred to the Street.
We really hadn't tightened our belt for two thousand twenty-three, didn't we?
Yeah.
Cut one point four million dollars from us.
Jeez. Yeah, yeah, kind of let that one dry. So, so that's, that's really, you know, a lot of those funds used as a pass. Municipal court, our two thousand twenty-two estimates were lower than budget due to lower jail service costs that we were asked to pay. And then, we do anticipate those to spend back up. So, we budgeted a higher. What's that? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. There you go. So, we do anticipate those costs jumping up in two thousand twenty-three. So, in legal, nothing too much there. The increase in salary and wages for COLA and medical benefits. Central services, where we tie everything that, that touches multiple departments. So, in two thousand twenty-three, budget is higher, you can see, than two thousand twenty-two because the desktop support technician was increased to three quarters, from three quarters times to fifteen. That's, that's IT to help, help Mason out. So, that's a good thing to have. Let's see, we've got emergency management supplies under our supplies section there that increased by about twelve thousand dollars. Other services and charges there, tying in our WCIA, that's our pool of insurance that we take, that increased by thirty-two thou, just over thirty-two thousand. Lease payment for St. Paul from the debt service, that increases next year by about twelve thousand three hundred. And then, we've got our capital outlay for the second fourth park installation.
Thank you. You said that emergency management supplies and what, what supplies are we buying for emergency management? Yeah, that's, I just, do we have a disaster kit here, or?
I, I don't know if he spent it all yet. We've gotten the grant, so we can turn the supply, but it's budget.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Any thoughts?
No, I was like, well, I was gonna say, like, an earthquake kit would be good. In ecology, we've got these boxes for staff that'll last for three days if we get stuck there. So, I don't know if we have that.
With food?
Yeah, food.
We all have, raise it up.
I don't know that we have a three-day.
Yeah.
Like, a seventeen.
Yeah.
Having looked at it.
Shelley checks those all the time and checks gates and wrote, and the whole spreadsheet of everything.
Okay, that's good enough.
I didn't check. I was like, oh, heavens.
Well, I've just been picking that, not sure what it was. So, that's good. Then at least the council's taken care of, you know that. Yeah.
We all just run down here.
Yeah. And then, things like a, a generator, do we have one of those? Okay, I'll think about it tomorrow. I'm not looking for those.
Well, sometimes those.
Yeah, exactly.
In my health, I would quit all.
Yeah. Jeff, carry that around. It's just by the front door in the neighborhood.
So, that's nothing. Do you guys do tours? Do you do, because that's why during onboarding, we do all that stuff that it comes, it's like, here's a birthday kid, here's a generator, here's a.
We do a tour. I don't know if there's someone.
I will add that to my list.
Anyway, you guys are good. Because you know, as soon as the alarm goes off, you're like, ah, I don't know.
Okay, now we're just building, you know? That's cool. Okay, excellent. So, decision cards in those departments, none submitted. The ones Sean submitted wouldn't go under city council, because, you know, they, that's not the budget.
We're a big way.
We're gonna add. That's right. And no future significant budget issues in those departments either. So, now, I'll turn it over to Casey.
Sue, as you, you want questions as we go and stuff?
Yeah, sure.
Department?
Okay. Yeah. Do you have any additional?
No, I just wrote down, well, actually, beautification, I think that's a great idea. And I'm happy to see that this downtown association getting started. I'm, I'm curious as to the city's input into that beautification. Are we gonna? That's what I would say. I would say that we provide criteria, you know, like, we've got our color palette and things like that, and kind of the overall feel of what we're looking for. And then, then we tap into those groups to get their energy and excitement on how to fit within the criteria.
So, the concept we discussed, anything within the right of way, we would control what that was.
Okay.
Even if they're providing matching funds.
Okay.
And what we talked about with them, with their landscaping and, and the outside of their buildings to match, match the work that the city's done in the right.
Good, good. Okay. Got you.
It just made me think of a conversation with the business, talking about that actually, that my husband, yeah, they were excited about the thing. And they made a comment about the picking up litter and stuff around their business and how there's some environment around their particular businesses' dumpsters that really caused them to hesitate to go out and put stuff in the trash. I've been wondering if that was brought up. Sorry to.
Not like, like people out there, like, kind of camping.
Yeah, so those kind of obstacles for businesses?
Yeah.
That might cause them to, like, well, I'm not getting free flowers out there. I can, like, pick up the wrappers and get these.
So, public safety was brought up a, a little bit, because it's, it's an integral part of what this association will do. But this meeting wasn't about public safety.
Right, right.
The other public safety meetings we have held.
I was just thinking, those, those things go together when you're saying that. I was like, I would be, as a business owner, then thinking, well, what I just said. If, if my staff is not comfortable maintaining the area.
And I'd be curious where that business is going and when that happened, because Adam's not here, but we've been cleaning out those dumpster enclosures.
Okay, I can share that. It might be helpful for him to, to make a visit if one.
Because working with the property owner, we can trespass them from those areas, and that's helped them move on, move on. And you see, you know, our last quarter crime stats, you saw our property kinds decrease. And I believe it's a direct correlation to the dumpster.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I'll turn that over.
Glad you brought that. I had the same comment from who did the safety meeting, a woman over here at the Safeway. So, you have Safeway, then you have the licensing over here. So, in that area, she said the exact same thing. She's nervous about after hours going to the dumpster, and wouldn't ask her employees to do it. So, anyway, just, I, I heard the same thing.
Okay.
I'm curious, and you don't have to call out any in particular, maybe you do online, but I appreciate the listing of all the decision cards you, you're funding. How many didn't you fund? And were there any that, you know, I, I don't know how to ask this. I don't want to put anyone in the spotlight. It's kind of like, because I really. Okay. Yeah, no, I, so I guess, maybe I'll ask it this way. What would your criteria be? So, I noticed for determining whether something goes in or out.
So, I have certain criteria that I look for that are more on a thirty thousand foot level, having to split into, as I'm understanding, county priorities, if they're working on a strategic plan, how can these fit into those? And then, obviously, making sure that they balance in a budget, right? But what I ask the leadership team, who really knows what's most important for them, is to prioritize that decision. And so, as I'm going through them, I don't have to make the decision on what one's most important, because Don knows what his department needs more than I do. And so, I prioritize it based off of that. Some of the things, you'll see some, like, Selena submitted one to have kind of a little study and, and purchase supplies, because we need, really need to reshape what our office looks like inside. So, you'll see on the decision card, and it'll, in here, it has all the unfunded ones. I think she requested sixty-five thousand a night. Some of it's a gut feeling. I just felt like, with our development services fund, we've seen some decreases. We forecasted it will increase next year, but we don't know. So, I wanted to be more conservative, and I think I partially funded that at twenty or thirty thousand, you know. So, you'll see some of those, too. So, yeah.
Okay. So, the ones in here that say not funded means they're, they're not going to vote for it.
And you can see.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah.
Unless council's.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So, yeah, if you go to the section where Jennifer's, that's the decision.
Right, yeah, yeah.
It'll have all the funded ones.
Yeah, okay.
And/or say partially.
Okay.
Some of them are partially.
And the funded ones are already rolled into the budget numbers.
Yes, so, with, and we'll, we'll show you those with the decision cards out. Yep. Okay. Any other questions before we go on to finance? Yep, all right.
It's huge, you're right on.
Did you guys hear me on the salaries and benefits?
Yeah.
And then, the other services and charges, we just have a small increase. We purchased some really exciting software to track leases and debt. So, we're pretty excited about that. It's a new accounting rule we have to do for next year. I know. It's pretty exciting. It does a journal entry for me and everything. So, that's pretty much our only increase for next year. We have one decision card. It's for a cost allocation study, and this was an audit recommendation that we received a couple of years ago. It is for our inner fund service payments, which are the finance department, personnel department, executive department, and the legal department. We charge a portion of our time to, like, the street fund, development service fund, and swim fund. And we haven't updated that in fifteen years. And the auditors are like, eh, you probably really need to take a look at that again and dive into it. So, we're going to do a study next year, and so we can bring on some help to do that.
I can just start a little bit more, what they come up with, basically, the equation that we use to determine what amount Casey's time, my time, should be allocated to the different funds.
And that just makes our general fund more accurate then?
It, it makes how we track our time, where we track the finance for our time.
And it makes those restricted funds that really should be paying a portion of general fund services, see their share of Stacy D'Inhoole and.
Right. I mean, when I was reading the card, it, it kind of made it sound like we might be able to capture some additional flexibility in the general fund if we're not already properly capturing those in the other funds.
It, it could. If, if it's determined that we're not charging enough for those funds, then it would bring more than that.
And really, no future significant budget issues, other than if audit costs go up or anything like that.
Okay. The main changes on our department budget are going to be from the increase in King County's contract. So, the contract with King County is increasing the substantial, it's fifteen percent. That includes a ten percent COLA for next year, body cameras, and the possible risk management as an increase. Currently, we're using our funds to pay for public safety in two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four. Maybe positive, new Jersey, if you're shooting. Go ahead.
Thank you. Does this increase also include adding the one additional person? That'll be on the decision.
Okay.
Does this amount of the five million to twenty-three also cover the open positions that we still don't have off?
Yes, so the, that's, that's if we, so that, so the actual cost to us, we will get less, because we have vacancies currently. Right now, we have four. And so, we will be refunded the amount of money that we didn't have before opposition. So.
That we budgeted for.
So, what are the chances we're gonna get at least two of those?
We have one coming on board in December that just got pushed back. And then, I'm hoping to get the next one sometime around the new year. So, I should have two pretty quickly.
They've been trying to create, you know, I, I would say, better lately than.
Yeah, yeah. So, they, they do have a, the vacancies right now is about a hundred for the sheriff's office. So, that's come down from about a hundred and twenty. So, there's been some progress with it. There's a huge bubble of new people, about fifty or sixty that are kind of working their way through. Of those, you can expect to get about fifty to sixty percent of them that make it because of the standards and training. So, we don't mistake everyone.
Which we appreciate.
Yeah, yeah. And some of the ones we have taken recently, it's like. So, so of that, I think they're hoping to have the vacancies down to sixty, which is kind of about, you know, the word before vaccine by the end of next year. Does that mean they'll get there? I can, I've, they, they really don't have a good way to deck. They are more recruiting and doing better recruiting than they have been in the past. We're, we've hired more people than any agency in the state. It's just that they have to make it through. So, we're still waiting on that part of it. So, getting our stuff funded or our positions filled shouldn't, it should happen. Go ahead.
Average, it's gonna be about two fifty. It was two thirty a couple of years, between two twenty and two thirty, depending on the position.
It was, yeah.
Yep. Go ahead, Sean.
So, I appreciate that update. The body cameras, any part of that, the resistance to that was managing the recording. So, who's going to do that? That's something with the contract? Do we have to do that?
So, that's gonna be still to King County.
That's to King County.
Yeah, so, if I'm not mistaken, Congressman Schreier acquired some funds for that, which I think is about two million.
Okay.
King County, kind of start that process, because the equipment is not super expensive. It's the retention records. And it's the managing of all the requests for records.
Officers have to go through each video that's requested.
Yeah. How, you know how long they have to keep those? That indefinite. How, you know how long they have to keep those? That indefinite?
I don't know.
Is it six years? I I don't know.
And it depends on what it's for. So there's some things that are indefinite. Anything that have anything to do with homicide, they keep it forever.
So a couple of other things. Uh, so the contracts going up. Is there any opportunity for the contractors to negotiate that? Or is that just, and we can re-band together and say, or have we negotiated that?
I I'll say um, some of the work, I, a lot of this is labor negotiations that happen, right? And so um, as an oversight committee, we need to send one or two people to those labor negotiations. And anything that comes out of that, what what's, what's those negotiations finalized? There's not a whole lot that we can do. We've pushed back a bit on the overhead that the county charged us. And we've asked for an audit of that because uh, it seems like it's off the amount of overhead that you're charged compared to what we're getting. So that that would be pretty minor compared to the overall.
That's great news about the hiring, the bringing on two new officers. Um, I would encourage us to uh, promote that, you know, with that on Facebook, whatever, so that people know. Then, because they certainly know that we're down. So we need to be certainly telling them that we're responding to this and going back out.
A little spotlight on.
Yeah, we can't go, we cannot over communicate with public.
But not that new, it it's replacing bigger positions, yeah, that it were budgeted for.
We need to, yeah, but we need to tell them we're getting back. Because they asked that at the public. Down to what, thirteen, I said? Uh, probably thirteen, so, so anyway, we need to tell them we're coming back up. Um, I was wondering about, you know, when they, one of the things, I think it's great that King County's doing a better job recruiting and promoting. And are they offering signing bonuses? And if so, who pays for that? You know, do we pay for that? I mean, how does that?
I I would think we are paying.
Yeah, I was gonna say, how's that work?
Well, actually, um, it's not, it's not, yeah. I think King County's offering the ten thousand dollar tiny bonus, uh, and the contract is nothing.
Okay, well, that's interesting.
Not so, not so, not so, not so, they told us that they're not paying.
Okay.
And they only get it if they actually make it through.
Yes. There's also a referral bonus, so if it's any King County employee that refers someone, it makes it through the program. I think it's five thousand percent.
Wow, I'll start referring.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I'll figure that out too. Yeah, I'm referring myself. And I don't want to be a cop.
Kansas is twenty-five thousand.
Okay, I'll refer to Kent too.
Sorry. Well, the problem with that, and I'll talk about it for a minute, is something that we're really trying to push back on as we meet, we're seeing management. If if these different departments are just trying to, it's it's a race to who can offer the biggest. And and a three-year, you gotta be on for three years to get it. All all we're going to do is start a three-year cyclical cycle when people are leaving. So we'll, we'll see where it goes.
Okay. And then the last one, and I think I sent it to Jeff and Reagan. I just watched a Nova documentary called um, Computers Versus Crime. And that's, it's a horrible name, but it's basically about using algorithms to predict uh, where crime and prevent it. It's a really good show. You should watch it. And it's not as, it it came across as like, ah, this is the way of the future. We can do this. And in reality, it it just predicted the exact same places. Because you put the data in for those places and it's starting to predict the exact same place. But anyway, one of the things I reached out to some of the, the people that were interviewed on the show and asked if there are, and we're kind of talking about environmental factors that we can promote that reduce crime. And I'm thinking, in this instance, and I'm trying to get more on that, are are the presence of parks, do they have a positive impact on reducing crime? Are there factors like that, proximity to schools, sidewalks, things like that? And can we, I'm starting to try and think about how, all the intersections we have between all our programs. How can we promote each one of them saying, this, this is, they support each other? Yeah, and and if you have, you know, if you have, if you have maintained sidewalks that people can walk on, you know, I I don't know. But there's a whole s- school called environmental criminology, I guess, and that's, so I want to see. I'll do offline. I think it's something we should look at, those factors, put them in and see where our crime is. I know our crime is downtown. But in the surrounding communities, communities closer to parks, do they have less crime? Anyway, I'd be interested in that.
One of the things you've talked about on the Clean, Safe, Welfare Committee is this concept, and I think what you're saying is nice attracts nice.
Yeah.
Right, if we can have murals and, and our downtown looks clean and people see, oh, there's no litter around. Because litter invites litter, right? And so uh, that's an environmental factor that we need to work on. If this looks nice and Fred Meyer paints it and looks nice and does some improvements, right? Also, we've got this downtown that's shining a little bit. We're keeping litter full and I think that helps.
Yeah, but it would be nice to have data.
Yeah, I'd love to see that, yeah. Sorry, I'll let you go on one more.
I thought there was the last one.
No, but I just thought it was. Well, I was gonna say, I I saw the email this morning about the, the vehicles getting hit. So what are we doing about that? You know, are we gonna put a camera out there or, you know?
We looked into the batteries. About twenty different things that we've gone through.
Exactly, anyway. Well, I mean, eventually you get to explain where's the cost on, you know, if we have enough stolen, it's like, okay, we'll put a police officer out there. So um, so I'm just wondering about, you know, what are we thinking this? I'm sure that gets around. It's an easy target.
Lights, cameras, you talked about moving them up here, but it's not the back of the parking lot.
Is it possible?
Yeah, I guess I'm jumping gate, it's possible to do.
It is possible to gate it.
Do what? No, that's, that's what.
One of our warehouse. No, there's a mannequin. You drive by and you can't see him.
Yeah, yeah, so it's a, it's a septet principle. And we are starting to push a lot of this, that's come out to kind of work with the, you know, using the design as part of the, the uh, crime prevention. So we we are kind of starting on that already.
And I'd really appreciate it that's the meeting the other night. No, I will literally start up this. But I think we should do some, maybe some, for studies or whatever, to see what do these things work. As you mentioned, just putting, just putting eyeballs in your window will reduce crime. Well, let's try that. Let's see if we take some businesses that are willing to do it and see if that has an impact on crime. Because if it does, then we can, then let's do that, see why, you know? So anyway, I think that's, I'll just put it out there, something to think about for actually testing some.
We've got eyes on you.
That's, that's not nineteen eighty-four at all.
I would not get in a car.
Anyway, so I appreciate you.
So the question that I had is about the one point nine million fish that will be the refund for the four office vacancies for the year. And when that refund comes, when would that be positive? Maybe more Casey question. Comes the first invoice that we receive, and they don't invoice us until we receive our first property tax payment in like May. So um, we get our reconciliation there, and they just credit it against the first five months of the, of the year.
Okay, so, so this five point.
It won't be one point one because we've got overhead costs, vehicle costs, all those that were still paying.
Oh, I was just doing that at two point seven, yeah, that's.
Right, and it's, it's based on the amount of time. For a while, we went to, I think most of the year we got to, but yeah, it's kind of every floor that had to.
Yeah, it's not a time back.
Yeah, because we have, we have to pay overtime to cover.
Before vacancies that like two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, you can only get thirty thousand dollars back?
Well, we're using that to pay overtime, to get people coming through positions, right? So there's not, there's not a huge like, oh, we've got this windfall because we didn't have three positions still.
Yeah, I mean, I could do that. Okay, I guess I was just wondering also to tag on, is that lump in? As we're going, we're going to the public telling people anymore, and we knew, we do for long-term viability. But I was wondering if that refund would roll into what's going to help us live along for the next few years? How that, how that's been tallied and how we're crunching it in communication to the public? It is, okay.
Any other questions about this? We'd like to, this one's funny, but a detective position, just to kind of give you an idea of what that detective would be doing. We currently have one, he does all follow-up stuff, um, which kind of limits our ability to proactively address crime trends. We do a lot of that with patrol and they're doing as good a job as they can. But um, having somebody that does not have a uniform on, uh, and having that person actually jump out of the car and it scares people. Uh, it prevents them from committing crime. They're like, they have people that don't have uniforms on that get out of the car. It's a huge deterrent. Um, and so we'd like to have two, because you're not going to send one guy out without a uniform on. That particular position will be used to A, alleviate the workload from the one detective we have. And then B, allow them to work together to do some proactive tasks, um, specifically in this business area, because that's where we have worked. And that can be, um, and one of the things I'd like to see then, there's some real low-hanging fruit on people out reselling stolen stuff. That's, that's super easy. I've done a couple of those before. There, you you go and you sell them something, you tell them you ripped it off from Fred Meyer, and then you send someone else in to buy it. And then it's a really easy organized retail case, and it gets packaged up and seen. Um, and actually, we have one that we got from uh, E thirteen, you know, a few weeks ago, somebody's dealing up front with Fred Meyer. We know who that guy is. We're trying to refer that, but that's the type of case that takes a lot of time. And it's really difficult for one detective to, and so if we have two, that that makes a huge difference in working on those types of cases. Any questions?
This detective, in addition to an officer, that you were talking about.
This is the officer, yes.
Oh, this is, okay, I thought it was two officers.
And this was originally in the base budget, and we had moved it down to a decision card, so this one you'll have to filter into your binder.
Okay, um, some budget issues is going to be the ongoing maintenance repairs for our building out there. I know we've been looking at air conditioning, it's expensive, so um, we have to go back and fix things if we're building the noise. The continued recall of residential growth, obviously the addition of the lake point is going to be significant cost for officers. Um, we're paying a lot in overtime to cover our vacancies. And we have some that are mandated by the county as, you gotta hold your fair share because we're down this. I think we're currently a little bit below their fair share, so hence why it's a little bit easier for us to get someone. I've been trying to get someone for the last couple of months, but um, they're being stalled because of our fair share. And that also, we increase officers with more money and then the contract with the King County Sheriff's Office has been significantly increasing. And a lot of it has to do with um, insurance and our contract that we're trying to make. I think they're using term more competitive to draw more candidates, so that's been part of why it's increased.
I have a question on the fair share. So the previous leadership of King County, Sound Transit at priority, has that been realigned where now Sound Transit doesn't get everybody first?
No, yeah, Sound Transit does not get everybody first. Yeah, they're carrying, I think, more than any other department. And part of this, they're, they're, I work there, they're in enhanced police service. So um, in that manner, if Sound Transit can't go to whatever it is, the local agency should be the one handling it. And they would normally want to. So the example, like if you're at Tepulon International Station, which has a lot of problems. Um, if there's like a stabbing, usually Tepulon will want to take that, investigate it, because that it means to their city. Um, and if they don't, then Sound Transit will. If they want help from Sound Transit, they'll come and help, but usually the first response is done by the, the agency that covers that area. So they're enhanced, so we try not to build them first. I, I, yeah, I I agree with you that that's considered. Anything else? Talk to Celine.
So the first slide here we have is our comparative budget. Um, so you're going to see here that we've got some lower estimates of salary and benefits due to multiple vacant positions that our department's experienced the last few years. Um, and then you'll see that increase being that we hired those positions into the next year. So um, we're kind of, as you can see, kind of getting back in line to that staff, that staff level. Um, the other piece here too that I want to point out is that um, we have two grants that community development is carrying. Ones for our climate action and then our comprehensive plan. Those are pretty large grants, eighty thousand and then a hundred and twenty-four thousand, um, split between two years. Um, and so those are in the base budget, but we get that money reimbursed, so we're going to find these guys that are covered. Oh, sorry, this is just that. Thank you. And then um, in the development services fund, again, you're going to see kind of that change um, with our salary and wages because we are staffing up. Um, I shouldn't say staffing up, we are staffing to where we were. Um, obviously, the cost of living increases are rolled into these costs. Um, and then our other services and charges, you'll see down there, that's a pretty big number, right? Um, and those are related to the school impact fees and the fire impact fees. So we collect those and then those go out um, to those agencies. And when we did the budget in June, this was, we uh, we thought we were going to be collecting school impact. Because on an average, and it's been known this last Tuesday, um, that that number's too low. So while this number is is large, um, there, those are offset. So, and maybe Casey can also help too. So we collect impact fees on behalf of the school district and the fire district, so those come in. Um, and then those monies go back out to those districts, we send those out. So it's kind of a, a watch.
Yeah, I was just wondering whether the number, how that, what our recent decision or what.
Oh, yeah, it's not included in here, but it won't matter because we're not, yeah. And when we do these in June, we don't get their impact fees until like July or August, and so we just go off of what we know. So are you talking about the difference between twenty twenty-two and our estimated actuals? Right, okay, so um, some of that has to do with our salary and wages, because we had a lower.
I'm sorry, I'm not saying what.
Like where's that? So it's just in the development, which is separate from the general.
Right, 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 yeah. But this should, this should be a surplus of like.
We aren't because our revenues are down to match. So um, okay, so what they budgeted for twenty twenty-two for revenues, um, their estimates are coming in lower. Uh, so we're actually are drawing down our fund balance a little bit to finish projects that came in last year. Yeah, so there actually won't be a surplus in development services fund, and I'll, I'll show that to you when we get to the forecast as well.
This is just part of the pie, right? And so this shows our expenses went down. It's not showing that our revenues also.
Right, and that, and I think that's a really important thing to remember about the development services budget is that it's very sticky. Yeah, right, so we're going to have things that come in, we've got to process those with staff time and projects change, right? So we're kind of in this. So we're kind of in this, a little bit of a loop and I would say work. Yeah, okay. And then Sean, I just wanted to touch on a question you had earlier, kind of department by department on the vacancies. So when I came on last year, we had eight people in our department and we're now getting stacked up to our eleven. We've got one vacancy in our department, which is the development review engineer. And, and you know, just honestly, I anticipate that role's probably going to be a contract position for a pretty long time. So that's obviously going to change our contracting and what you'll see on that moving forward. It's a very competitive position to go find talent for. As you can imagine, engineering services and folks that do civil engineering really go anywhere they want in the region right now. But I think there's some benefits of the contract, you can pay for that overhead, we get subject matter expertise to get potentially higher.
And we've been contracted for that position for some time.
So I'd say if I found someone great, it would be awesome, but I'm also not. So Reagan talked a little bit about this earlier as an example. So part of the decision card that I'm putting forward is just to do cubicle reconfiguration. If you walk through City Hall, kind of over by our chief, if you come in the back door, we've got a series of cubicles in there. There's, I think there's only like six cubicles. It's, it's really not an efficient use of that space given the growth that we are experiencing. And also kind of looking at how Casey's department and my department kind of work together in that space. We are hybrid and so I recognize that our staff isn't here every single day, all eleven of us, so there is ability to overlap, but we're not set up for that, right? So like I don't have phones for certain people, I don't have desks to space for certain people. So I had originally asked for sixty thousand, that was based on a rough estimate, I think that Ethan had experienced where it was about six thousand dollars a cubicle. I'm okay going down to thirty thousand and I'll tell you why. I think that it's the difference of, you know, if you do a home remodel, like you're going to, I'm just going to change the backsplash, right? And all of a sudden you're like painting, giving me fixtures. And I think that, I, I believe that the thirty thousand will get us to a point where maybe we're reusing some things we've, you know, we have existently that maybe we're more mindful about the ability that we'll get what we need to operate in a good environment. That's also an employee's experience here, right? How they show up to work. And so, and then that gives us opportunity in the future if we need to expand. So we're just going to be more mindful to set ourselves up in a longer, kind of in the long view as well. Yes.
So does thirty thousand dollars pay for new cubicle attachments, desks, computers? What does this thirty thousand dollars pay for? Because it really feels like we just need Reagan to go out there with a screwdriver.
Yeah, so, so it's, it's really not that easy. So the community development department did her little charrette kind of workshop of how would you design these areas? We've got really talented people on our, on our staff that can go in and do the, we could draw the map, right? But what we can't do in what's choosing, what is becoming difficult is understanding outlets. Where's the electricity going from? Where are the cables for the computers going to go? We've got one pillar in the middle that sources that for that entire area and that's just getting us out a little bit above ours. And so the thirty thousand dollars will allow us to bring in somebody to kind of help us finalize that mapping, those initial ideas. And then ideally with this reduced amount, help us identify what is usable that we can reuse and maybe what those gaps are moving forward, right? So we, and, and even I told Reagan, I said, even if we had cubicle walls, I don't have desks, right? I don't have, you know, computer equipment. There's certain things that, it's not just moving the wall. So that thirty thousand we get is some consultant help and then I do get us the reconfiguration and then maybe set us up for success if we need to be. That's my goal, that's the. Does that answer?
I was just going to say, maybe, you know, we get Bob from Public Work to come down and help you guys design some stuff, but other than that.
Yeah, no.
I don't think Bob wants to do that.
Actually something Krista and I and Mason and IT and facilities have been working through. So while this is sitting in my budget, I'm not doing this my office, we have included everybody. I mean, I sent John and said, go see if there's any desks that we can use. And he came back, he's like, we got nothing, right? Go see if there's cubicle walls, we've got nothing, right? And, and so that was kind of why I started out at sixty. But now have come down to thirty. So this will really be a joint effort, really with the leadership team to kind of figure out how we create really good environment for our employees.
How often are people coming in?
It's, it's different from different departments. So right now I don't have desks for everybody in my staff, right? So I have a staff of eight and I think I have like six desks. So like my office is a flowing office. So our department comes in, probably everyone comes in about two days a week and we've just been literally emailing each other, using our calendars to just.
Yeah, I mean, we have, so I have multiple questions about this because we have a similar situation. My team, we're never all onsite at once. We have landing pads, they're generic. Anyone can come and park their laptop. We have an Outlook calendar where we sign up, we have landing pads one through six and you sign up through the landing pad. It works really well, honestly. So, I mean, I have to assume all of these things have been considered, but it, it does kind of pain me to think we had all this talk about lessening our footprint and here we are now discussing making our footprint larger for people that are here only two days a week. So I want to ensure that it's being done in a very conservative fashion because this office stuff is crazy, expensive.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. And, and I also agree with the statement of kind of that contracting, right? But right now, even, even if I've got four spaces, the way the math works with eleven people, that doesn't allow that kind of two times a week. So that's what I'm saying, and I share that space with Keith as well. So I share that space with Siobhan, with Chief Q, there's a bunch of other things, we just need to get a little bit more.
And they will be generic, not unique designs. Yeah, I mean, because I'm a huge, huge proponent of a hybrid work environment, but I'm not a proponent of a office.
And I came from a, from a hybrid environment as well, where it was a thing called a hotel basement, right? Where you just come in and you dock in. But, you know, in the conversation is right now, we're doing that in some people's offices, which is fine. But to have kind of a more level, to your point, kind of playing field, you could come in, maybe even having one desk where it's like that desk is a plan review, that's it with some bigger monitors, you're doing work that day.
Right, right, right.
But it's more than this too, the current space just isn't set up.
Because it wasn't designed for.
So redesigning it to several different hotel spaces that don't need to be as big as what we have now, things like that is really how this conversation is.
And you should come up with a fun Covington specific thing, not hotel.
Yeah, and, and I will just say though. You know, when I, when I thought I was going to have to do this myself, I, I downloaded a bunch of information from the internet and a lot of those consulting firms have contacted us. And, and just recently had a conversation that, that number, that six thousand number is really now starting to fall around that three and four thousand dollars a cube because offices are changing. And then they also stated too that there's a surplus in office equipment. So, you know, we might be in a sweet spot to do this in some ways.
There's a place down in Kent where I've gone and bought you.
Yeah, we're definitely. Yeah, but I think, you know, like I said, we could draw pictures all day and, and I think that talent exists here. It's really when we get into that higher level of, you know, electric.
Okay.
Yeah. We need some help. Yes.
Said, it seems like after the pandemic, people are more comfortable with this hybrid model, like people are expecting that. So if it's a matter of, you know, having a desk to manage that, even the two days a week, I, you know, I totally agree. But I also think we need to be thinking about how we go forward with your next, you know, and make it so. And then I think it's, so I appreciate that we're doing it for community development. Have you done it for the whole City Hall? And if we haven't done it, I think we should think about that. And then we're not going to be in this building forever. So eventually we're going to move to the new City Hall and we need to be thinking about what is the right size for that because, you know, like three years ago, we just said we need umpteen square feet because we got, you know, a hundred and fifty people. Well, now we can, yeah, fifty, we can fit it. So I think those are just things I really appreciate that I think we should be thinking about. And we can use what we learned here to shape what we're going to do in the new city hall area. And then I would say whatever our break is, we go back and take a look at your work section and just see what you're looking at.
All fine. We spend lots of our time for a late.
How often are people public or are contractors involved in that space? Because I think it's not only the employee strength, how we present the community. And I know you think about that, I'm not saying, right? I mean, and so do they come in and like do all sit down at that desk? Do we just give these conference rooms or give it to the counter? And how are we incorporating that, that field with that?
Well, I will tell you that Kelly in our department has been really tracking how many times we get walk-ins and, and I think our front desk staff is too as well. And it's, it's, it's a handful of times, but most times we can direct people, if there's not somebody here, we can direct them to internet or, or, you know, kind of web thing. And, and Krista and Kelly, I, Kelly and I, Kelly being our permit center manager, who really oversees that front counter area. We're also working on kind of a long game of how you, you help the customer in these hybrid environments. So we've been talking with other cities like Bellevue, Perkland and Redmond that are really, I mean, they've, they've got tech teams that are, you know. So those are all things that we're doing to kind of enhance that customer experience, but for the most part, you know, I, I will say I've gone to the counter maybe twice, you know, and, and most people make appointments. Most of our customers know how we do business. It's just those occasional walk-ins that, that. But then our staff, internal staff, even if we aren't the right person to help them and we happen to be here today, we all know that we want to get them to that right, to the right person. So we do our best. Right. Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of kind of just transition, right? Is that how you implement this kind of the hybrid? And, and some cities have done a great job embracing it, other cities are struggling. I think that we're doing, I think we do a great job here. I don't hear a ton of complaints, honestly, so that's always a good sign. But yeah, we have, it's more to do, we can, we can level up.
That's a question, triggered something in me. To that front area, you know, sub-chamber, whatever, that's, that's great, we publish it out. Wondering about public safety in that area too. Does it feel safe there? I mean, do you ever, because there's not really any barrier between.
Yeah, they know it.
Oh, is there? Okay.
There's the fire under there.
I haven't, I haven't ever done that.
Yeah.
Okay, well, just something to think about going forward. Likely to happen, maybe something.
Do we have little buttons up here?
We just got Adam.
Strangely, I know. I did, you go into auto. It was, I saw it. It wasn't my money. Um, okay, a real key to the non-dupated significant budget issues. All right. So, so here's four, four issues that we've identified in moving forward into twenty twenty-three and probably out to twenty twenty-four and, and even potentially further. So as you know, Brookfield and Toll Brothers has a ceiling point from both points, right? And their project is moving significantly faster than we anticipated it would under. Right? Toll has deeper pockets, Brookfield has deeper pockets, and they've been doing this, right? They are, they're pros at this. So it's anticipated that we're going to need some additional resources to keep pace with that demand of that project, right? So I've got two planners in current planning right now, you know, if not all hands on deck, I've got two people assigned in that division. And right now we've got twenty just normal applications within the city, right, that are open. And then we can have like, in those particular responsibilities, that department are very predicated by timeline outlining in state law, right? So there's a lot of, we have to be mindful of that. And so something that we've kind of in leadership and talking about and with my peers is, you know, how do we, how are we going to manage this project, right? Really, what, what do that resource need look like? And, and that we might need to kind of, and not, and not only that, but those needs are going to seep into other departments, right? So similar like additional time in financing, potentially additional time in legal. And so we've been looking at kind of how others that have done master plan developments do this work. And, you know, we're kind of constantly talking with them and about maybe a separate agreement, maybe setting up like a native staff for that project, whether that's the consulting team and on-site consulting team per se. But there's just going to be more to come on that and I think that conversation is going to come in a little bit sooner than we need to. But, you know, Dawn and I just had a meeting with them, I think it was last week, and I really just made it out for them, right? You want this level of service or this type of service, then you need to have a different conversation, right? Because they're going to want to be fast and, and be our pilot, right?
In the past, anytime you were talking about these large development projects, the costs associated were always predicated on the fact that the developer pays for whatever the services are. And is that what you're thinking about right now? So it, it's significant if you can't bring them to the table to agree with that? Or we should have them to that standard because that's, that's our manner of operating.
Well, it's, yeah, so no matter what, the development is going to be paying for development, right? So they're going to pay fees to reinforce that time. But what this means is that I may come back as a department and say, hey, I need an additional engineering contractor, contracting service. I need to hire out additional planning services to help absorb the, the resource need to get that work done. Because I can't, my two planners can't manage forty projects all at the same time, right? So I might need to, I might need to provide, I might need to give that, that work to be, to help it.
Right, but then wouldn't we pass that cost on as a development? Okay, so when I think of budget issues, it might be initial because we have to pay, but we're going to be getting those tasks. So how significant will it end up being? And then if we aren't going to have to be putting the final bill?
Yeah, probably cash flow.
Cash flow?
Okay.
That, yeah, that makes sense.
I want to think we told them, you know, when they, when they hear the message from all the wealth as well, we really want the process to speed up. So whatever you're willing to pay for, we can do it.
Right, right. That's good because I wanted to just make sure there wasn't a shift in pot based on, no, whatever.
It's just more of a heads up for you all, you know, because that's a budgetary aspect, right? These projects convenient, that's revenue going out, that's resources being used. So we, you know, we have peckier contracts that we're carrying, consulting, keeping for that.
So Celine, are the costs for additional, when you're, when you're budgeted for this year?
No.
Okay. And then what is the lag time for?
Okay, and then what is the leg time for reimbursement? If we have to bring someone on to do that work, will, will that get covered in the same particular year?
It should because they're paying the permit fee, right?
Doesn't the contracts have a net, net 60 and then you end up getting it back? Or how does that work with?
No, because it's, it's a reimbursable cost, so we just, we just spend what we need to spend with those.
Right, so with the contractor, do they normally have like a net 30 or a net 60? So when we hire them, or, or how does, I mean, because it's a contract.
Yeah, I've experienced that in, in kind of A and E, like architectural engineering contracts yet. And so it's been pretty much, we're covering our costs at all times, right? So right now, we have a contract with 15 for engineering services. We're, we're dollar for dollar, if not slightly over, to, to cover the cost of that contract. So we're not spending a ton of revenue. But I don't know if there was a leg time when that initial contract got started.
Um, we, I mean, they generally invoice us every 30 days.
Yeah.
And then you have like 30 or 60 days to pay for it, right? So it, it, there is a bit of a.
Yeah, I'm not too concerned about it. Yeah. Okay. Comp plan. Um, so we did receive $124,000 grant from Commerce. And we are doing our best to stay within the scope of $124,000 to update our comprehensive plan by 2024. Um, it, it's not enough. Most cities actually right now, I just had a director's meeting on Thursday. Most cities are budgeting in the $250,000 to $300,000. And I'll tell you why, some of the experiences, and you might talk to your peers out there as well. One is there, there's quite a few cities that maybe didn't do as a robust update in 2015, right? So now they're having to really do a major update in 2022 and prep for 2024. Um, the countywide planning policies have a huge emphasis on housing, equity and inclusion. Um, and so we have to build those lenses into our comp. And while we like to have good intent when we originally do our work, there's actual real tools now that they're making us use. So what CD did is we went back and we audited our comp plan based on what we need to be in 2024. We see our gaps, those, those really being housing, transportation, updating our capital, and then the equity. And I would even probably throw some economic development in there as well. Um, and so we, we kind of know where we're going and we're focusing on that. Um, and we think that we could do that in 124 plus potentially, I'll be coming back in 2023. For maybe another 30 or 40,000 to get us a plus the finish line. But we're doing our best to stay in that number, that 124,000. Um, I feel like every time we go to a meeting, I'm learning something new that's going to be required of us. That I don't have the technical assistance to fully do, you know, all of the data analytics of that. So we do have to rely on our consultants to help us with that data. But we will get through it. I think we're in a really good position because we invested so well in 2015 into our comp plan. Um, so that was, you know, we spent a lot of money on that front end, you know, back then, and I think that's serving us now. But just a heads up, there could be some more money we are going to have to dispose of that. To meet that, uh, 2024 deadline and then the requirements so we can, we can block to get all of our other dollars. Um, I threw these last two in here just probably as just kind of FYIs. So we've got House Bill 1220. Um, as, and some of you may know, that's the, the bill that the legislation passed a few years ago. Where cities are going to have to start taking kind of their fair share of the issues surrounding homelessness and providing services. Um, I'll be doing probably a conversation with the council in January or February in more detail. Um, we don't really, still don't know what's going to come out of that, we're waiting on Commerce. So I have a lot of unknowns right now, but the pre-work or the draft work that I'm seeing is resulting in potentially some work for us. Either programmatically, policy level, things of that nature. Um, and then we've got our climate action grant that we went out for, which is $80,000. Um, that's going to be really great. That's really focusing on our vulnerable populations, a little bit of what you talked about earlier, Sean. We're going to get some data around that, um, so that then we can start applying those equity inclusion lenses and just really understand our current state in some of these topic areas.
What, um, in particular about climate?
So we're just looking at the, just, I can never say this word, just, just for impacts.
Yeah.
Thank you, it's a rare, a rare for me to say. Um, and, uh, so we're going to be looking at that and kind of what are our vulnerable areas within the city? You know, when it comes to like climate matters, um, you know, things that we might have used to experience with COVID, right? How does that affect our businesses, our communities? Um, we're not doing a greenhouse gas evaluation, we're not in a transit area. So we're going to kind of look more at that social aspect. Um, that, that hasn't been fully spooked out yet, but so that'll come to you guys at some point. Um, but that's where we're, we're leaning towards, and then our comp plan strategies as well. But we anticipate, right, you do a plan, you have to implement those plans, right? So there's going to be some action potentially upstream of our downstream of that. Um, Reagan and I were talking too about this, that the climate action is, is optional this year. It's an optional action, it's an optional element in your comprehensive plan. But everything that we've gone to has said you really should do this if you're going to want to be competitive for federal and state money. So, you know, while it's, i- it's a value add for us to understand where we are, it also creates benefit for other departments to go out, um, to, to do the work, right?
I, I think it's a great idea in, yeah, I know state and federal, to, toward that. And if for nothing else, to minimize costs. So again, I would encourage, I know, the, you know, think about those intersections. So how can our parks help, you know, reduce our climate impacts or protect those vulnerable communities by slowing down streams or whatever? Um, Public Works, you know, they, Tacoma, they got some of these street swales, um, where the, they slow down the storm runoff. They, you know, planted them, they're actually kind of cool, I don't know how they maintain them, but things like that, I think, you know, there are some ways to, to incorporate climate change. Awareness in a way that reduces sinkoff and impact on our infrastructure itself. I mean, it's a great, really great idea. I'll be interested to see what comes out.
Me too, I, I'm quite excited. Um, we're learning a lot right now in our housing assessments, some climate will be, that'll be great too. So that's just more of an FYI. Um, ideally, the state will give us funds for implementation, right? The grant opportunities to go out there, but it's always, you know, who knows how that's going to be. Um, so that's just an FYI. And then the last one here I put up, I actually asked Casey, I was like, I haven't seen that's on anyone else's slides yet, but, um, it's just the general health of the US housing market. It impacts on new home starts and mortgage creation. So part of the steps that CD takes when we put our budget together and do that, we call everybody doing business from a construction perspective. And we ask, what is your forecast, right? You've got a 30 lot subdivision, when you get out to actually constructing homes, what is your new year, right? Is it three a month, two a month, one a month? And, um, they've always hovered in that like three to four a month. The feedback this time is one to two a month. Um, because there are, you know, issues with people being able to get this homework in with, let alone new construction homeworks. So there, the builders are navigating that environment as well. Um, I, you know, I, I have lots of stories that they shared, one I'll, I'll just put out here is that, you know, they had a lot of homes that were, that were on the books ready to start. And these developers had a lot of earnest money. And when that initial tape happened earlier this summer, people had $100,000 in earnest money on the table and couldn't move forward with building their home. And the reason was is that they were using like their Amazon or otherwise, you know, their, their tech stocks to offset the cost of that home. So their mortgage with that ability to put that money down was around, let's say, 3,200. The minute that that stock tanked, now their home mortgages became, and they can't, that's not sustainable for family. So they backed out of it. So a lot of the developers shared that with us and was like, yeah, we've experienced that. Moving forward though, in some of the conversations, they're not as concerned, you know, those things happen, but moving forward, they're just probably going to be a little slower, right? Because of the financial. So where, you know, we need the process to quit, quit moving ahead. But that was just as of, you know, this week, my conversations, it could be a different story. Um. All right, that was why I'm going to hand this over to Don, unless there's more questions.
You got any time?
Yeah. Do a real break real quick?
Okay, let's do a five minute break. Thank you. Thank you, Krista, we are back from a break and we'll turn it over to Don for Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and everybody else that's here. Um, so a little bit about Public Works, we have three, three sections we'll talk about today, and that's, um, Parks Maintenance, Streets and Swim. So in this, uh, in this first piece, um, the salaries and benefits that you see increased in 2023. Uh, that's basically the clean team, that's Jennifer, that addition. Not you. But we can, but we can, that's, we're, yes, perfect. The other kind of significant difference is the other, in other services and charges, you see between 2022, the estimated actual and requested, that, that $100,000. Uh, that's the turf replacement that we moved from 2022, and we're going to do it in 2023 at CCP. And that's still offset by, by a grant.
And that's, that's grass, not, not.
Correct, correct. Um, and then the difference you'll see down, Capital Outlay, that difference in that, um, we got a brush chipper, which is on its way, uh, but still been delayed. Um, the other is actually a replacement for the decoder replacement, which is a truck replacement. And, uh, the reason why the estimated actual is low on that is we can't get a vehicle to replace it. So, um, we'll try when we can, but right now, uh, that's the reason why it's not expected to occur in 2022. And any questions on Parks Maintenance before I? Barreling along. Um, so then in Street Fund, um, the, uh, pretty much things are pretty much the same in that regard, if you look at other services and charges. The, uh, their increase in that is actually, um, from our central services overhead for, so Francisco and Delaney are both CIP. Uh, and get paid for, paid, uh, reimbursed like through grants and that type of thing. But overhead costs, like we talked about, um, like for their, their load of, uh, share of, uh, like finance and, and legal and that type of thing. Can't go get reimbursed by the grants, so it has to be reimbursed through, um, the central, or this fund, basically. So that's the reason why a little bit of their dollars come out of that, because it can't, the overhead can't be charged to grants. Um, and then operating transfer out, um, that is, uh, the, our projects, the Safe Routes to School project, there's like 76,000 in that. Finishing that up, and then also the Flashing Beacon project that, again, that is our, uh, the, um, RRFD, re- re- reflective rapid flashing beacons at our roundabouts, and that's been delayed because of, uh, again, getting, uh, materials. So, uh, but, uh, hoping to, they keep pushing it, now it's supposed to be November that they do that, so any time now. Um, Capital Outlay, same similar thing, uh, the brush chipper, the decoder. Uh, the piece in that though is there is a flashing yellow arrow at 180th and 256th. Uh, the decision card with that was to share with the Kent School District. They had asked at, uh, that location to change that signal, that left turn, uh, to make some modifications there. It was going to be a shared 50, 50% uh, share of that was a $50,000. We were doing 25 and they were doing 25. They have not, um, like, now agreed to that, that's kind of like changed or whatever, so, um, it's not likely to happen this year, uh, because of that. So we've reached out to them again and they haven't responded to us, so, um, yeah. They said November was the next time that they thought that they would be able to, that was their next start date, it was supposed to be in October. Now they pushed it to November, um, so I'm hoping that that, that happens by then. Yeah, supply chain.
Uh, again, I would recommend when you do, to open up, live in time or whatever, and that's something people, they appreciate. So it's been interesting, roundabouts, they, you know, they're slowly growing on them, I think they, they like them now. For those that don't drive through them, yeah. And then the flags, I think that was the first step, and then people said, you know, it'd be great to get some beacons or whatever. So I, I think we just need to say, we're responding exactly, and, and not assume that people know that we did it.
Any other questions? Service water management, um, that mostly is, um, we see some changes as far as the salaries and benefits also, there was, uh, just some cleanup as far as staff splits. There were some times where we were evaluating where, uh, people were, like, uh, actually. Uh, in other words, um, we had like two people, it'd be 50% in street and 50% in swim. And then we would have another, like, two people like that, but most of the time, they've been spending, like, this person's dedicated to street, this other person's dedicated to swim. So instead of having that kind of split, we're kind of having the, the budgets reflect what they're actually doing now. And it's been, oh, long enough where we know what that is now, and so they're, that's primarily what those changes are, was, was having the actual, staff being dedicated, so now we have, uh, not splits, but 100% in each of those, uh, departments for the staff. Basically the maintenance, I should say maintenance, that's, this is all basically the maintenance aspect of it. The supplies, there's a little bit of a change in that, that had to do with our storm, uh, filters, um, for the estimated actual. They were supposed to be every other year, um, just be, some of it was COVID related, we, we kind of got off track, so we had to kind of reset that. So we're doing it this year, we were going to, uh, that should be one of the difference, uh, from the 52 to the 70. And then the Capital Outlay, those are our projects, uh, the 212 project, our Tamarack project. And then, uh, we've got projects scheduled for next year as well for capital projects, and that's where that Capital Outlay is. Any questions on service water? So here's our CIP, um, the, uh, 1201, the 2023 budget right now. Um, that's kind of the middle phase or, or that in between in Lake Point, that might be built by the developer. Um, they're still debating whether they want to take the three and a half million dollar TID grant or not. So they may build that middle section all themselves. So, um, that'll be dependent on their decision on that, um, we're still working with them on that. Uh, the maintenance facility, that doesn't include the decision card, uh, that we'll talk about here in a little bit. That's just what was to finish out design, uh, for that. And then, um, annual, uh, traffic safety, again, that's some of that Safe Routes to School. There is some, a little bit of equipment delays for that project too. We've got the paving and everything out, but the radar feedback trailer, speed signs, those again are some pieces that are delayed in getting that. So there's a little bit of money rolling into next year, uh, to finish that out, so. Um, any other questions? Uh, obviously the 1127, 516 project, that will be in full effect next year as well. Questions? Uh, so the 2023 funded projects, um, we have in there the maintenance facility. Um, and that is, um, uh, obviously a significant 2.9 million, uh, that is, um, shared between the general fund, Street Swim, CIP to, to fund that based on those splits. That would be to, uh, hopefully construct that next year is the plan. Um, know that one of the things, um, that that was funded, but know also, I think we want to talk, we might talk about it again a little bit later, but that it's on, uh, that that is on at least, uh, property, uh, 25. property, uh, twenty five year lease with an option for a twenty five year if they would extend that to us. So we'll talk a little bit more about uh, that, um, the maintenance worker, um, the two making the maintenance worker positions in here is taking some of our seasonal, uh, or taking our seasonal funds and, um, and then converting that to additional staff person. So what that, what that does is it sets really three people dedicated in street, three people dedicated in swim and three people dedicated in parks maintenance. So that's pretty significant right now. We only have two in streets. We have kind of two and a half in, uh, swim and two and a half in parks. So what this would do is give us three guys dedicated in each of those, um, those funds.
And I still have parts I'm understanding the math on each of the different parts. It's be so low for the one because that's the, the offset from the seasonal, is that?
Correct. There's some that had more seasonal funds in it already. Yeah.
That's why I was kind of saying, but, okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that would be great. And also helping with, um, you know, when people are on vacations and stuff like that, it just helps with still having people able to do stuff in different departments. Um, and then there's, uh, not been any funds set aside for, uh, trailer replacement. So we've, uh, started doing that now for some of our trailers that we have. Just so again, that it doesn't have a big ticket item when those do come up and need to be repaired. So that's just putting money away. Um, so when, uh, it's time to replace the trailers, uh, we have funding there. Um, the partially funded, the increasing, the equipment replacement funding, this is one that, uh, some of you on council have seen a, a few times as far as knowing that we just got some aging, uh, equipment that needs to be, uh, uh, replaced or some, some of those when we first started years ago, we didn't have enough, uh, funds really to even have a replacement fund, so to speak. So, and we needed some of that equipment. We kept it. Um, and so it's, it's, uh, getting those. In, in other words, one of ours, uh, we call, we call her Betsy. She's our old, um, uh, first plow. Uh, we still have, uh, her because, uh, she's been great. Uh, um, I think it's, what is it? Eighty something, nineteen, it's, it's, yes, it's, it's a little old, uh, but she's good. I don't want to talk. If you can hear me or something. Cause she's doing good. Um, but, um, it didn't have any funding to, to replace, uh, that five yard, uh, dump. So this, uh, was huge. It's a big, a big cost to do that. But that, and we had another vehicle in parks maintenance that didn't have replacement funds in it and it just needed that just because of the growth of, uh, so then although we didn't, uh, fund it fully, um, it's significant, um, in, in getting that, particularly those two vehicles that had zero replacement funds, um, in that. So that's great. Obviously the challenge, if everything does get funded as it showed, is getting those, but those vehicles will be still a challenge. Uh, uh, but, uh, and then a few unfunded piece, the clean team, uh, vehicle, a couple of things like that. We, uh, I think Regan even talked with, uh, Jennifer about that of not uh, needing that vehicle right now and probably be again, difficult for us to get a, a, a try, probably need to be a truck in some sort of sense, but uh, trying to get that could be a challenge as well. The Toro Outcross would be, uh, something again as we grow, uh, uh, in the future and then a variable message board, um, in the future.
I have a couple of questions on those ones. The, the clean team maintenance tech vehicle or the, the park some rep, they likely don't use their vehicle or bring them to do, like, because most programs are beacons and beacons.
So, uh, they, they use them. I think considering actually, um, especially the, the two seven three, I mean, three, nine, or whatever. But with this, it was really, uh, and those trucks wouldn't be what this would be there. Right. And, and so that was the big cost to this one. There's a lift to lift the part into the ground. Yeah. And so, um, talking to Jennifer, really her focus is kind of this poor downtown area right now. And, and she felt like she's, I'm really comfortable without the vehicle as long as the maintenance crew can keep coming to pick up the carts, she doesn't need it. And we've got a, another vehicle here that's a floater that she can use pretty regularly. Uh, and so when she needs one to carry supplies and stuff, she'll have access to that.
And then the second question I had was on the message board. I thought we were trying to enable, not enable, use ARPA funds for that. Did that not work out? So what happens is they would only let us use it for that allowed purpose. So we could only use it for COVID messaging or, and then that worked. What?
Yeah. That was the same. We tried to do it with emergency management, the same type of thing, funding grant, the same type of thing. They were like, well, only if it was like an emergency or something. Yeah. So.
I wonder if that's something a business might promote if we could put funded by, or something on the bottom of it. You know, cause that would permanently be on the bottom of the sign or something. Okay.
Um, we'll use them, um.
Or you can move.
Yeah. Yeah. It's just a trailer, you know?
Yeah. Uh, and then the Toro, uh, but that's, is that a ride in call?
It's kind of like a, uh, uh, almost kind of like a side by side or like a, uh, gator, like our gator, um, four by four type thing, but bigger. And what it, what it does is we can use that to pull, uh, like our, um, aerating equipment and stuff instead of borrowing stuff from like swim. Now they have to bring that piece of equipment out. And, and, and so they have to kind of share that equipment to do, be able to do some of the, uh, work at, uh, field. So. But it's a, you know, it's a, it's, it's pretty expensive.
I have council business I need to. It's something, but when you talk about Betsy, because I'm all about the need to be a different, no matter. That could actually also be a fun community thing, manual plow.
Oh, yeah.
Or something like that.
Yeah.
Because then it helps again, get people.
Buy into it.
Buy into it.
Especially if karma comes around and, and, yeah, that's great. So.
Like the Sean Sniff got some.
Wash Dot has a few of those. Yeah. Betty, Betty Whiteout, yeah. Any other questions on that? Um, and then just a couple of things on, uh, budget issues. Some of these we've talked about in the past. Again, no payment preservation program. That's some of those, uh, pieces we talked about at summit. Um, that's basically overlays, chip seals, not having funding for that on our roadways, which we've done some of the outreach recently for, uh, talking streets. Um, and then another piece I wanted to bring in, uh, additional parks maintenance needs for expanding parks. So with like SoCo with, uh, Jenkins Creek Park, uh, in the future, uh, we'll need, you know, some additional staffing, helping, uh, in that area. That's some of the things that Ethan and I have talked about a little bit as well. Uh, sustainability of street fund, uh, same, similar, uh, thing you've heard in the past in that regard, just that being supplemented by general fund. Um, and then fleet replacement, that was one that's been on here. I, I left on here. Obviously there was a big, with that decision card, uh, that, that partial funding, that's a huge, uh, help in that regard. There's still a little bit of, uh, some of the vehicles that we need and some of the equipment that needs that, but significant improvement in that, but there's a little bit left in there. So that's all I got in that regard. Any questions on that? All right. Good morning, everybody. Parks and Recreation. So, uh, first we'll just kind of have the division budgets and we'll start with aquatics. For salaries, wages, benefits, there's really no changes for full time staff. Uh, the changes you view see are related to part-time staffing level being adjusted for programs. Um, and so, uh, while they're going up, that also means that there's corresponding revenues that are going up. So. As far as supplies, uh, very little change there. We do actually see a decrease and that's largely because we're seeing less of the need for small tools minor pieces of equipment stocked up. And other services and charges are increasing, uh, and that just has to largely do with the increased cost to maintain that building. Moving on to recreation and cultural arts, uh, no changes with our full time, full time staff levels. Some changes here again related to part-time staffing levels and again, um, they're going up corresponding with programs that are also going up. We're seeing that this year and, and we're pretty much back to pre-pandemic levels. What was that?
And revenue.
And revenue, yes.
Well, I did have a question about that because I was looking at the revenue and budget and here's that we're still, our revenue per product is like one hundred thousand dollars. So it's gonna end up being, is it seven hundred? Okay.
No, I think to your point, like what, what do we subsidize the products?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And before it was four hundred or something, two hundred and fifty or something like that.
It's around nine hundred.
So is there a way to?
Pre-pandemic, we've never, unfortunately, we've never been sub, only subsidized in two hundred and fifty thousand. I want to say maybe six hundred thousand that.
That's not what was communicated. No, that's fine. That's separate conversation.
You got something to add?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Subsidy for aquatics is nine hundred eighty six thousand and for recreation is four hundred and thirty five.
And then for recreation, cultural arts, uh, some of the minor adjustments have been, um, under other services and charges. Our credit card fees have gone up. They also have offsetting revenues. Um, and then we've also seen twenty two thousand dollars go up with the contracted structures. Those also have offsetting revenues. And then our player space, uh, which is one of our software systems we use for our athletic program. They've increased their costs. Uh, we also increased our costs when they did that. So we have revenue offsets for those as well. But you do see those percentages going up. And then for the parks division, this is the planning and development side of parks, uh, I guess admin as well. It doesn't include parks maintenance. Um, and so that's, uh, really no changes in this. When you look at services and charges, there, there actually is a small change there and that has to do with, um, in twenty twenty two, we had a pros plan that finished. So we had some consulting services there, uh, and then in twenty twenty three, we're yeah, I've got two different screens going. Sorry about that. Um, and then for twenty twenty three, we anticipate picking back up the planning feasibility study for the aquatic recreation center or renovation project or something like that. Uh, and that has grant funds associated with it. Any questions on just kind of the operating budgets for the different divisions? And then we get into the CIP side of things. Uh, for our public art, we have ten thousand dollars allocated and that would be for uh, putting in two rotating, uh, art pieces at CCP. Um, that would include the cost of installation as well as the stipend for the artists. We also may have a, may go over a little bit as well because if we don't get our vinyl wraps in this year, that would plan for twenty twenty two, then those would be unspent twenty twenty two and the costs would go up. Um, and those costs come out of the art fund that the city has established, um, that I can show it's some, up somewhere else.
So when, since that's not spent, that is that kind of again rolled into the assumption of the incentives for this? You know, if you don't, it's just gonna be meaningless.
Correct. And the art funded is a rolling art fund. So if it doesn't get spent, it collects into the next year. This just shows what we're planning on. And then the South Covington Park project, um, that's moving forward and that's showing the cost that we just gave for twenty twenty three. Um, and this will be coming back up in another couple of slides. So I'll, I'll talk more about it then. Um, the welcome park is eleven thousand dollars. That's the acquisition project for a parcel that's on the west boundary of the city. That number will also likely go up because that, when we put this slide together, we are assuming that acquisition would happen before the end of the year and that's unlikely at this point. So those unspent funds would roll over and move. And then the Covington Aquatic Center, um, that has to do with the feasibility and management design related project that we've helped for either renovation or replacement facility and that kind of grant. Yeah. I mean, it's, we're still in the process of selecting a consultant team and negotiating that next phase of what that will look like. So right now we're estimating that's what would, it would include as well going into pre-construction. Mm-hmm. Yeah, we have a, it's like just over a million dollar grant.
Sorry, if we decide on renewing, demolishing, would that grant also apply to that?
Yeah, yes. We're looking at both options at this point and really trying to collect more information so that the city can make a decision next year whether to move ahead with something new or reinvest.
The aquatic center, please move the center with name down.
So that would fly towards like the building of a new?
No.
That's what I meant.
No, that, just, just design.
Okay, thank you.
And there, and we also did get a, that was a state grant, uh, that the city received. And then there's also about a hundred thousand dollar King County grant that we have towards this.
I just wanted to ask about the welcome part. So you, the, that's been pushed back and when you acquire that property, once the, so an eleven thousand, so, wow, do you already have a?
Well, the eleven thousand was, I think, maybe to put up a split rail fence or something around it. Once it, we acquired it. But the big three hundred and fifty thousand dollar amount is probably what it will cost to acquire.
Then maybe next year?
Yeah, I had a brief conversation with the new general manager of the utility district, um, and she was just getting up to speed on it. There's, I think you all know it has contamination on the site. So it's going to require some cleanup and estimating what that timeline looks like. I think all we know is it's not going to be this year at this point.
Okay. Cause we had that temporary sign on there for a while. It just new sign out. So it's kind of welcome in Covington. And then, um, I really like the CCP sign and branding. So I'd like to see that kind of being carried through all our parks if we can, just kind of standardizing. So.
Well, that's good. Cause that's what we're doing with the Jenkins Creek Park. It's so good. Yeah. We, we decided that was a council.
Oh, but we never really decided on who goes and who's gonna brand that specific spot.
Yeah. When we get to welcome part, I think there'll be, for sure, we'll bring that to the council and have that discussion as to what it might look like.
Uh, SoCo Park, is that partially funded by rail or?
Partially, and that, that'll be what we present on here in a couple of slides. Um, we have about a one point two, one point three million dollar state grant that's funded it so far. And we'll fund some of the construction, but there is a gap that we uh, have at this moment. So we'll be looking for solutions for that. So then for decision cars, um, we have a park bench dedication program, um, and we're injecting ten thousand dollars, which would fund two benches and we would also receive ten thousand dollars of revenue for those two benches. Some years we might see four, some years we might not see any, but basically, uh, it'll be kind of offsetting revenue. And we do, I, I think it's pretty realistic to say that it's gonna launch in twenty twenty three. Um, I know that the council's probably heard about this for a while. So we can keep this. Pool vacuum decision cards really have to do with updating our replacement cycle for pool vacuums at the pool. They've gone up in costs and also, I think we had one scheduled, maybe one every four years or five years. Now we really need one every three years, so this is really just updating what the real costs are for having automatic pool vacuums. Aquatic Center lobby improvements. This has to do with that entrance area, right when you come into the pool. With really two main goals, one is to kind of have a little bit better visitor experience, kind of update some things and then also to create some functionality for the customer service staff there. Hopefully help with the flow of customers as they come in and out.
I have to say, I was really happy to see this in there. It's, I don't want to, you know, put you on our pool, but. Well, yeah, but there is an emotional tone, but anyway. It is one of the places in Covington where I feel we don't shy and where, when I visit, I don't feel, I, I don't feel pride. So I am really happy to see this, this is, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I've done little things over the years to try to do, you know, make it inviting, but it's been a hard, a long time.
Most definitely, and I do notice them, I do, and it, but it's, it's.
It's hard to miss the obvious, right?
And there's a giant pool in the ceiling at the end.
So, tell Ethan something he doesn't know about.
And the maintenance, I mean, there's just this blackberry plant that just, it just gets flipped, it never gets actively moved, you know, it's just a lot, a lot of things.
Jeff's gonna tell me where I decided. So we took, I did, I heard about on NPR that there was another community that's taking something over, where King County. But anyway, made me think, so we basically did King County a favor and took the pool and then we've been wanting it ever since. Is there any way we go back to them and say, you know, their energy can off, well, no, I mean, as in, is there any way they can offset some of these costs or whatever to say, look, this is more expensive than we thought and you kind of, you know, so. Yeah, I know that's exactly what they did. But I'm wondering if there isn't something we can work with Reagan Dunn on or, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, so that's a message that Reagan and I talked with King County at before the last Parks Levy, which did result in some things that are favorable for the city. One is our, they collect those Parks Levy revenues, they used to kind of pass back to the city, it's a very small amount of revenue. I think we used to get like thirty thousand dollars a year, that's kind of to a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. So while we're not necessarily putting that into the Aquatic Center, it is coming and helping with development projects of the park system. And then there's also a grant program that they started for aquatic facility. And that's actually the hundred thousand dollars that they got from the county going for the new. And there's potential to get up to five million dollars towards it. So they do have a grant program, we're just not quite there with a plan to be able to go and ask them for anything more than a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I would keep thinking about that, if there's any ways we can offset, basically take it over their ass. No, let's give them fifty grand back, anyway. I appreciate that.
I have another question, have we ever looked into maybe offering naming rights for it to help offset the, the, the multi-care, because what they're doing. Multi-care Covington Aquatics, you know, and maybe they can pay us twenty thousand a year or something. Well, that's true, that's true, I don't know, I mean, it just seems like a pretty good.
We did, I know, years ago when I was at the Aquatic Center, looked at just even a naming right on the scoreboard on the inside, more a very small amount of money and did not have any success. Which is why Harbor Homes was on there for years, nobody disdised. So, but, I mean, we could certainly look at those things again, but.
I'd be surprised if anyone would be going to do an ongoing, using this kind of, I'll give you a twenty thousand dollar one time to name something.
And new facilities tend to be what really draw out the naming lines, putting something on something that's operating.
And whether that's have the Aquatic Center with the, 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 but is there really we can make an event where like kids watch goats eat delicious? Like I'm just, I just think it'd be cool, I think it's educational, like my kids have to watch it on YouTube to, to figure out that goats can clear out a lot of, how do they do that? Like I, I want to see it, but just like in a.
It is interesting when they're at the front of the front mire, yeah, I mean, they're there for a couple of days.
The goats, yeah, I just, I'm just saying, like, maybe it's at CCP where we have some.
Just take care of all your problems, just release the goat.
Even without derailing. I'm so sorry.
The greatest of all time?
Yeah.
Totally past, you have to compete for them.
Yeah, I think it sounds like, it's cheaper than people going.
It is, yeah. And they have, they have so.
It's, I just, it sounds like something, it sounds like community more than just.
Number of the goats.
I mean, truly, like. I could see someone out of there. I could have gone, and I think that would be like of all ages, because I would go watch goats hurt themselves.
Hurt themselves?
Well, I, I, well, let's say hurt, but, I can't.
For athletic assistant, we have a part-time, it's a part-time athletic assistant position that we put together and that would really be to support our athletics program that has grown a lot. I went actually back and looked at what our revenues were for, I think, athletics in two thousand and eighteen or something and it's almost half of what we're at now. So if we want to kind of maintain that and keep our staff here, we need to provide some support for that. We also have an internship position that was toward the Recreation Cultural Arts Division. We've used interns a lot in the past, but the last few years have been really hard to get a quality intern. A lot of those positions are becoming paid and that's what we're proposing. And they really do help us when we need it the most during the summer with events or athletic programs. And even like camp adventure in our recreation section. Camp adventure is, so we received a grant in twenty twenty-two where we actually increased the levels of a lot of our summer programs. Camp Adventure was one of those programs, one week, six weeks. While that was great, we found identified six weeks is not something that we can kind of sustain and so we're proposing three weeks.
Is that specified? What's the one week? Oh, okay, oh, and then twenty twenty-three is three weeks.
Is three weeks, and it does have revenue offset, so we do charge user fees for that.
And I, it hits that, what we hear from our youth council, that we need more older kid programming and this is one of the few
Yeah.
options we have for our big kids and I know that people, families struggle with what to do with their kind of tweens during the summer, so they're not just home all day playing video games. This is a really good program and something I think that we should totally support. I was thrilled to see six weeks, but three weeks is better than, than none.
Yeah, and, and you know, I think each year we can kind of revisit, we sustain something more, have our staff.
I know, staffing is difficult, yeah.
But I think doing more than one is great. Outdoor family movie is another item, I think we went from one to eight last year. And they were very popular, I think we had over two hundred or two hundred and fifty people at some of those, some of them had to start pretty late because.
Seriously, I've never been because my kids go to bed for that, so I, I'm, it's always interesting to me, how many people go out there? I have a job, but, yeah. And my kids stay out on it somewhat, I've read.
And, and those, we're not going to do eight again, but, you know, proposing five and then the funded and that'll be a good balance.
Question on movie, how do you select the movies? Do you have to pay fees for those?
We pay licensing fees for them. My staff pick them, I'm assuming, I think they kind of look around and see, because there's other movie nights that are happening and they coordinate to make sure not everybody is showing the new didn't. And they have to make, you know, their family friendly.
Yeah.
Did you pick six just because of the class or the staff?
Five.
Or five, I'm sorry.
Just, staff just really say, this is what we can pick on in the summer based on their experience last year. We can always do more, but then, you know, you kind of hit a tipping point of like, okay, we would need to bring out more staff.
I would ask, you know, at those, people are very open, they fill out raffle cards, I would just ask, would it, get a, you know, survey and say, you know, is there demand? Yeah, is there a demand for more of these? And would you be willing to, you know, is there any, where we can pay for this or, you know, or offset it or whatever, I'm just, but I, I think you could, every weekend you could have.
Well, I'm just thinking like if it's six hundred dollars, I could certainly, again, you know, I'm going back to businesses or sponsorship, I mean, like, but if there's not, you know, then there's that. Well, and there's only so many weekends.
I know, yeah. Really cool, and they're just really popular.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're awesome.
And the staff are doing, it's not, it's like they're passive, they've got a pool and they're handing out stuff, but it's just really, I, I think it's what kind of the counter of what you're saying about the pool, that you really shine. Diversity of people that go, you know, this is, it's, it's a real good reflection of our.
Great, it's nice, we have a perfect site for it to.
We do, yeah.
The administrative assistance, another part-time position, just really to support the planning and development side of the division. We're just busy with lots of projects and supporting the rest of the department. So this position would help with those kind of administrative functions and help with your commission and website and file everything.
So I have a question, you have two part-time, what is the likelihood of filling a part-time position?
We're gonna try.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll see if we're successful. Sometimes it's, you know, you find the right person and it's the right fit, if we're, we'd start there and if we're not successful, then probably come back to the council with another solution.
Would you be able to hire one person that would be more, like, you know?
We, we talked about it, the likelihood of really finding that person that's a perfect fit that does athletic programming and was more administrative functions. So we do have a partially funded decision card, which was Aquatic Center office improvements. This is a focus done, if you're familiar with Aquatic Center, there's the office kind of near the shallow end of the pool and kind of fun side of the, the building. We actually have five staff working out of that one office. And so we've got hodgepodge of different furnishings in there to try to make it work and whatnot, it's just not efficient use of the space. So kind of similar to the conversation that was had earlier with media development and their workspaces, we're trying to make sure that that's a functional space for those staff. Those staff do show up every day for their job and it's just that type of position. So that would be moving that more. Unfunded, we have a daytime family entertainment. Which could be something, something we did last year with grant funds, wasn't in the regular budget prior to that. You know, something that we could always look at adding back in at some point.
We'll just talk to that for a minute, the reason I didn't fund that one, you can see it costs considerably more than the movies and the movies brought in on average a hundred more people than we used to, and so that's one.
And what was that, like the magicians?
Yeah, there's like a variety of. Story walk posts announced, we partner with the King County Library to put out different story walks, which are basically story that's kind of chopped up and put on signs all on a trail or someplace. It's pretty neat. They're just right now put on temporary kind of yard signs. They do get kind of burnt into the bushes and picked over and maybe it's just the wind, I don't know. But I think positive, I think that the idea with this decision card is like you could put something in more permanent if you wanted to. The cost is pretty steep to really do that for perhaps what the, what the program benefits. And then Crystal View Park. This is Crystal View Park expansion, it would be an acquisition project to add, I think it's about ten acres right adjacent to it. This doesn't need to be funded at this point. As we can kind of do options to purchase it down the road, that's kind of a tactic that we're taking.
I did have a question, Aquatic Center office improvements, would that be the space that the public can see?
Yeah, in the fishbowl kind of office.
Yeah, so that's even more reason to do it, I mean. You know, the public doesn't necessarily have access back here, but it's a big fishbowl of a pool, so it would, yeah, there's another reason to.
Good point. Any other questions at this point? So for future significant budget issues, I just threw down the one most significant budget issue, which is our SoCo Park project. We did receive a grant to do the master planning and design and construction of phase one. And that grant was like one point two, one point three million dollars. At the time that we did that grant request was before, you know, twenty twenty-three where costs had gone up, supply chain issues, inflation, all those kind of things. So all capital projects have increased and this one's no different. So what this slide does show is that we kind of have bookends as to what we anticipate this project costing. On the low end, you can see that we have a shortfall gap of about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars and that, okay. I'll just wait till that's like. And on the low end, that doesn't include some of the ad alternates. And the ad alternates right now would be, well, maybe I should say what the base bid include, would include a, a nice meandering pathway or sidewalk towards the street signage and a lawn improvement, some parking. And mostly they, basically opening up the site with access. Ad alternate one would be a additional trail that would kind of be able to create a loop and go down towards more of the natural areas. And add alternate two would be kind of doubling the size of lawn area. So we can still have a viable project if we don't have funding for those ad alternates. But it's a smaller scale project. And we also think there's no construction management services included in, on the low end. It's not a super big project that we're looking at, you can probably look at doing a pretty low level of contract with construction management or doing some other things. On the high end, you have the ad alternate costs in there, construction management services back there. I'll also say that our consultants are very realistic with us and saying it's very hard to estimate project costs right now. So I think we're also seeing somewhat conservative estimates from our consultants. But you just don't know until you get those, so they're providing projections they can. So while we do have this shortfall, there is a most likely solution if we want this project to move forward, which would be to use the park reserve funds that we still have. And that's about half a million dollars which falls within that shortfall gap. So I don't know if there's questions on that now, but I'm certain. So I don't know if there's questions on that now, but I'm certainly happy to answer that.
You think about courts and stuff like phase two.
They're in a future phase, yeah. Could be phase two, three, four.
Our new legislative team.
And, and that was the, the real intent with, um, you know, putting that master plan together, uh, is a huge hurdle for these type of projects because there isn't necessarily, when you do a master plan, any construction done, we're able to actually provide some construction. We knew it was gonna be a smaller scale project than the outset. Uh, but once you have that master plan, it's a little bit easier to go after grant funding. And then. Maybe I don't, maybe I is that the end of the presentation?
Oh, it's not.
No.
There should be some added slides, right?
Yeah.
Who goes here? Sean.
Okay.
And I can help you with some of the.
Yeah, I'm going to just. Talk about this. Before we did that, I, um, I, you'd also, I was saying, I don't know which, uh, budget Carla's work is in, but I think, you know, when you did, you need to think about our outreach and communication and get more support for her and one of the things that was just looking around, people have stickers on their, uh, water bottles. Have a Covington sticker that I can put some. Oh, God, we've already done it. Yes. Oh, nice. Is that waterproof though? Like, yeah, so I'd like to get those ones you can put on your car or whatever, that are a little more robust.
She's got those too.
Okay. So anyway, that I'm just saying, I think more support for, for outreach, cause again, there's a, a saying in community, uh, engagement, if the press didn't cover it, it didn't happen, you know, and so, you know, if people don't see what we're doing, I, I don't, it doesn't really matter how well we're doing, it doesn't, didn't count. So we have to really be thinking about it every single time, I'd say this eight years ago. How mu- how much can we continue to tell people about this? Yeah, I do. You gotta constantly, I just gotta assume they didn't know, cause they do, they come, I didn't notice, I mean, you don't know what's going in.
Well, then how would you have seen this? What could I have done to?
Yeah.
It, it's a good point though, and there is going to come a point, probably going to assume that we need additional.
Yeah.
You saw earlier in executive, it increased the part-time person, they clear his time. And there's a little bit of discussion that maybe that person could help.
And I really appreciate the, the professionalism and branding and things that they're really getting better at our, our, um, outreach, so. But I would also second that, that it's getting close, that we're good, I mean, I went to an event, the RFA, I don't know if Carla was there. And Kent has their own photographer, you know? Yeah, no, that's not, but I'm saying they just. But I, yeah, so I'm just like, cause I thought it was a press person, she had this huge camera and she's like, no, I'm just. You gotta see what the kid screwed herself, anyway. We, we need to be, we, we, we need to be thinking about those types of things, how we can.
You do have a real camera person.
Yes, I know.
Have you not seen the fancy?
Okay. So there's something to be thinking of, but that's a period that I think is as important. Okay, so, uh, like I said, I've been on the council for eight years now, and this is the first time I've ever put a decision card, because I always think of them after we're done. You know, I'm like, oh, we should do this, and you know, you know, well, it just, yeah, it just kind of happened and, you know, I'm actually getting better also cause I'll know, I'll think of three or four more after we're done, so I write those down and then hopefully can find the post that I go to mine. Uh, so these were ones that just kind of, uh, I've been thinking about, and I don't know how much detail you want on each one, and I, do they all have these? So you all have the background on these. Um, so, uh, as Joe knows, uh, I have totally abandoned my, uh, support for basketball and I'm now putting, I'm all in on pickleball. And I think we're early enough in this that we could actually have a significant event, so. Obviously, we don't have that many courts, I think there's a couple, the, the private, uh, private parks, there's one over by my house in, um, what's the, Fairmont, they have a little basketball pickleball court, there's another one. They do, they put it up sometimes, yeah, yeah, there's kids playing every once in a while, and I think that other basketball court, I don't know where to find that. Where you put the duck signs up, that can be turned into a, you know what I'm talking about, where the duck crossing, um, that could be put into a pickleball court too, so there may be like three or four that court, sport courts out there that we could probably convert pickleball in the meantime, but if we do phase two, hopefully, uh, Soco, you know, the plan is to put in six courts and, I would like to see us have a, a tournament, um, and like it says in here, you know, it obviously would start small, maybe be a a citywide thing or, you know, Maple Valley, but the demand for this is just, it's just blowing up, I mean, it's just unbelievable, and I would like to see at some point having this be like a regional tournament, so the Covington Invitational or the Covington Open, where it would be.
I mentioned this to someone I know that's, I'm sorry, this professional pickleball player. And they're like, oh, that would be amazing, if you need help or information, I can connect you, yeah.
That'd be great.
They're sponsored and everything.
Yeah, oh, no, there's pro leagues, I'd love to see it on the pro, pro stop here. So be thinking about as we're building it out, if there's a little place, cause they don't, they, they stands. Now, you know, you have maybe Stanford forty people, I, I got Joe, and that's what's on this. Uh, and then, um, but so I'm just thinking that there is, we're close enough to the beginning, as long as the phase two doesn't get ten years out, you know, I think there's an opportunity to have a tournament. So when we talked about, um, uh, where were we when we were talking to Maple Valley about their, um, Mud Run or whatever it is, and the Ironman? And they said it brings in a new or different type of people that now see it as a destination, we're going there every year. Well, this is, I think, an opportunity for us to put ourselves on the map and say, you know, this is, this, and we would get, you know, and then maybe it expands into a whole weekend where you could have a festival around it too, and anyway, this is, I think, just the initial phase and you want me to turn over, you tell about the cost and then we can go to the questions? Or we can write in a question? Yeah, go to the cost and then we'll.
So, um, the case of all of these, uh, was really just kind of a staff exercise to kind of take a look at what would the cost side of things be? We didn't dive too deep into the planning of it, um, because we want to see if it's funded or not. So there are a number of assumptions, there's things that certainly could change. Um, but what we did do or staff looked at is, uh, since we don't have, well, we do have two pickleball courts at CCP. They have no nets, gotta bring your nets, but I've been by there plenty of times and seen people playing pickleball. Um, there's also, I'll just mention, um, at Crystal View Park, we have a kind of oversized half-court basketball court there. Uh, and there was a resident nearby that suggested maybe we want that for pickleball. Which is a great suggestion, that's probably something we can do in house, maybe next spring, we've thought about that, so. So things are trending towards pickleball.
Yeah.
And, uh, for this tournament, for this decision card, staff, um, looked at hosting it at an indoor location, if you did that, you could host it anytime, uh, and I guess Kentwood High School has a double gym that would work well, you could have everybody there. I'm assuming they'd be able to tape down lines or something, assuming they don't have pickleball line gym. It would be a two-day event, Saturday and Sunday, seven hours a day, ten to five each day. Estimated fifty individual entries, and then the costs really are the facility, eight referees, three recades, uh, and then our one full-time athletic coordinator would also be supporting that those costs are. I think, uh, when you look at it, you know, there's some one-time costs that have to do with getting some nets and supplies and things like that, that you want to do each year. And then it's just, uh, economy is a scale type thing, uh, as it's a smaller event, it's, you may not break even on it, but it's an investment that's in early years to get such something that's at scale, or at least breaks even, if that's a goal. That's really all I got.
Okay, and I would just add on that, eventually my vision would be, so I think it would start, we could do it indoors with, um, because that's where we have the courts. But eventually I'd love to see it out, uh, park, you know, and just have it out there and branded, you could have it on fencing, you know, Covington Open is coming. And then I'll get to you guys' question. Uh, I think it'd be good in the short term to survey our community to see who has potential pickleball courts too already, that we could, so if we've got six there and it eventually gets big enough, you could have satellite locations where you would, you know, and the feeds to the center court would be at the park, but people could be playing outline, that's what they do at, um, Hoop Fest, you play all over and then they play. Yeah, so. Yeah, it's logistic stuff would be tough, but they, um, and I mean, eventually we get to the point, I mean, Hoop Fest is run, they have a few administrators and stuff, but every referee is a volunteer, I mean, as they're all, so, you know, if it's a pro tournament, then obviously we got that, but I think we can, we have more facilities out there than I think we are aware of, so, but I like what you were thinking about starting in the indoor, that would get us started and then people would like to come and be more, so, anyway, um, I think that.
I was just gonna say.
Joe, sorry, Joe.
I got a new question.
So we'll go back to that.
Thanks for playing.
So, first off, people dedicate the budget, should we not check with, we can pull the, maybe even letting us host something like this in the spring or summer? Because with the, and how much they might charge us, remember. So I, I can speak to that, I mean, we, we use Kent facilities and have a interlocal agreement in Kent School District, so I mean, we're just working into using that space just. Yes, okay, so second question is, are we not jumping from time by like years on possibly putting this into the budget? For the sheer, sheer fact of, you know, talking about putting, wanting to host it at Soco, we don't even know when those courts are gonna be built. And if, I'm gonna bring this back up, bringing this back up, and none of this might make Jennifer mad, but parking for a tournament of this size, have we not learned from parking at CCP?
Yeah.
Well, they start indoors, but if we want to host something outdoors.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think that it's a good point, um, there, so I do like the idea of starting indoors, putting parking there. We'll have to see what goes, it, you know, we're looking at two additional, um, blocks that we could put in there. I, I think this is a minimal amount to start, and if it does get bigger or it doesn't pan out, you know.
He tries to, you don't have to be the same thing.
Yeah.
And then my next question is, is this really a demanding Covington, cause I have not seen one email, one question, or one person talk about pickleball. Now, granted, I might not be in the.
Yeah.
It goes.
Be like, work all their, you know, works up to me, be like. Maybe I just spend way too much time wondering about basketball for my kid, that might be what it is.
And the other thing I would say about that too, is even if it wasn't, if it attracts other people coming to Covington, you talk about it being a destination. You know, this, we want to look for those things that make us.
I'm just kind of thinking though, is this gonna be what the dodgeball craze was twenty years ago?
Yeah.
And then we stopped doing it.
If, if the nets are not permanent, I mean, if they're, they're posts, but you can remove or if they're just playing pool, you can play dodgeball. So anyway, um, I, I was actually thinking it would be a lot more than this to do that, so I was really pleasantly surprised to see, you know, the start. So that's that. I'm kind of excited about this pickleball tournament, so.
Yeah, I was just gonna.
Realized I forgot the other question. Just, whoa. That's what your question, you all agree, right?
Yeah, it'd be the great thing, like, you know, you don't need to give yourself a location, once, if it picks off and we have the volunteers and the old things, cause then people are going throughout our whole city. We just need to figure out maybe transportation or shuttle bus or something, that's probably yours to uncover.
So, the first thing you mentioned was you're
Around the corner.
That's an A-Wave, right?
Yeah, they're A-Waves.
Is that something?
Uh, no, I haven't talked to him at all. I just noticed, yeah, I just, we're just gonna show up.
If you act like you own the place.
No, I haven't, uh, I haven't even approached him, I just noticed that there is more of these resources out there.
I think there was two, yeah.
The parking.
Yeah. But if it's, so if it's only one court, you would only have three teams at a time in that area?
I mean, granted, there is, that is one of the widest, you know, it's a two, three, it's actually, i- if it's gonna be street park, and that's one of the. And if it is a wave, let's ride that wave.
Yeah.
Again, it's not too, the, the, of course, there's gonna be something new and great. We have to change as well.
Um, I think it's great, it could totally be part of our branding, probably could design really amazing shirts. We could also, if it grew, incorporate our local businesses into doing, you know, vendor booths and stuff, I mean, it has so much potential for forty-four hundred dollars.
Oh, yeah.
And it, it is, it is so hot right now, and if we get in on it before our other local cities, we can really. Yeah, so I, I think it's an awesome idea.
Yeah, Jeff.
Um, I love this idea, my only question is, how do we fit it into the budget to be able to offset the cost? That's only forty-four hundred dollars, but that is forty-four hundred, well, it's actually ten thousand five hundred. So, we have to look at, are we able to fit it into the budget to offset it for next year or do we have to wait another year?
We could put it in this year, uh, probably a, a park reserve kind of place that we bring this out of.
That'd be great. Yeah, exactly, that's it? You know, and you're talking about sponsorship too, uh, Hoop Fest, every one of the backboards is bought by someone and they put their names on it, you know, so, um, I, I think it depends on who's, you know, who's bigger.
Right, I mean, and we could even have little like classes to kick it off, to introduce it to the community, cause I've never played, I'd love to just if someone show me the, like, why not, and the council members, I mean, it could be, play pickleball with a council member, like, see how
Staff versus council.
I wanna play, Joe.
So. So what is, what do we do?
So the process with this, because these are not currently funded, is the council need to vote to include this in. Uh, I would suggest doing it here, I see, and then we can get the budget prepared.
Is this where we're, are we voting on these now or is this during deliberation?
You wanna do it now, Reagan? This council wants to move the pickleball tournament, uh, decision card for two thousand twenty-three.
All right, thanks.
And, and we'll be able to, when Casey gets the forecast a little later, see how this includes.
So I, I wanna say. So I, I wanna say that I wasn't a vote against, I voted against, that was an extra.
Okay. I didn't hear you say that, so.
That's cause I didn't get, I was rubbing my eyes.
All right, so the next one, um, cherry blossom festival, so, uh, back in April, uh, I was going to Kohl's, I think, to return an Amazon box, you know? And I drove into the parking lot, and these cherry blossom trees were unbelievable. I mean, it was literally like being back east and, and, um, I just saw that, I saw kind of a parking lot was half full, and, you know. I was just kind of thinking that there needs to be some type of spring event that kind of pulls us out of the winter and, and provides an opportunity to promote kind of this, this beautiful asset we have. Covington and ties some type of festival around that, and so I'm thinking it would be more themed, kind of similar to like the Makers Market, more art focused. Um, but I guess it would, you, you could see what happens and how it goes. Um, I was envisioning that it would be in the Kohl's parking lot area, the, you know, it's kind of a big advantage of those trees, but if it gets bigger, I know we have trees over here at. Old Covington Elementary School, I don't know if their blossoms are as good, but just a, another kind of event that. Uh, is a little different than I think what we've seen in, in other communities, would bring people in. I also think there's an opportunity for us to. Maybe partner with our sister cities, uh, maybe, um, in Japan, um, it seems like a natural partnership to kind of promote that part of our. Uh, community as well, to say, hey, we've got these sister cities, one of which is in Japan and blah, so, um. Yeah, so that's kind of what the cherry blossom, this, let me get, you, you, you have the budget on this, and.
Yeah, I kind of, um. Share, share my notes on this, um, the decision card costs are really just based on, uh, one day of Covington Day. I think we've not looked at like the Sunday, which they can be assured of. Um, and so we just kind of pulled numbers from that, um, you know, the planning and, and designing what that program looks like, we haven't. Got to be prepared, um, but some other notes staff shared with me are, uh, really had to do with some challenges, just kind of close to full, you know, sharing that information. One weather, a little more.
Yeah.
Forty-five percent chance of rain around here, I don't know where they got that from, but it sounds about right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Too busy.
Yeah.
Um, and so, I mean, unlike some of our other outdoor summer events that are really planned during, uh, the summer and the preseason, that's a little bit of a risk.
Right.
Um.
They're predicting when the cherry blossoms are gonna happen, that's tough too, so.
A little bit unpredictable for cherry blossom, the community date.
Yeah.
Uh, the location, uh, Kohl's, we're not sure if they would let us use the parking lot.
Hmm.
Um, we've had events there in the past, and then at times they've said, no, you can't use that parking lot. It tends to depend on who their manager is, if it changes at times, but that's a variable. Um, and then just full-time staff work, you know, adding a, another event like this does kind of. Take a lot of just prep and plan. And then also its impact on Covington Day, so this event would take away from Covington, if we receive the same vendors. Uh, and, and things like that. Now, it kind of made, you, you mentioned Makers Market, and I'm not sure that's what they were thinking of, and so they probably were making some assumptions of what it might be, it might not be.
No, it's.
So that's all I have in my notes on it. I do know, I mean, I've seen the blossoms there too, and I mean, they are amazing, but.
They do. Well, I appreciate that.
So pre-COVID, the Kent School District did cherry blossom festivals every single year, and it, it went from one high school to another, and they brought the same students in. From Japan at the same time, and we, it was a week-long festival and. It accumulated with a one-night event at whichever high school, it rotated every four years. I don't know if they're gonna go back to that, but I don't know if that's something that we'd wanna tie this in with.
Did it hold at the high school though, or is it?
Well, it would be held out, and then the final event at the high school. So it, they just had. Cultural things throughout the week. So it, I don't, so it's something different than what Sean's presenting, but it's, it's something that we can partner with the school district on. And with the chamber on, because that's where Makers Market is, at the same time, which would help maybe drop the cost. By having the chamber do things and the school district work with that.
Okay.
You got, sorry, yeah, I'm done.
Uh, so, then I had a question on the, um. Costs for professional services, what was that for?
That'd be probably, uh. As your performers, you have utilities like electrical.
I think that might cover police.
Police or security, um, anything that we contract out for additional services is really under that professional service.
Toilet, maybe, well, the other thing is those cherry blossoms are owned by Kohl's.
Yeah.
So, own that lot? They own that property?
They allow the, these whole, so much of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
They have to allow that, fine. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, um. Uh. I guess we just have to decide how much, if we want it funded or not, but I do, even if it isn't this year, I think there could be more investigation happening, because. Proper sushi, proper sushi, I mean, I don't wanna like, state the obvious, but our local chain.
Right there, yeah.
And maybe an opportunity for the, that we wanna play at the. E C S J to be involved, you know, and to be a little bit. I, I don't, I guess when I envision a festival like that, I don't think of it as, I know what you're saying with Covington Days, but to me, it seems like it's very, it's gonna have a whole bit, it's like, you can just kind of look at them.
It's more intimate.
Right, yeah, yeah, you don't need to have all the big, uh, I mean, you wanna have something that like, you know, maybe honors the, the tradition or, you know, but, um, that's. But, um, we, I, I see maybe even smaller scale, which might help with some of the. So, um, yeah, it's a celebration, it's just like a, to me, it's a spiritual celebration or along those things.
I just want to get into the.
Blossom shirt.
However that looks, I'm, I'm kind of okay with whatever. Joe, back to Ben.
So, so like Jeff said, that the Kent School District used to hold one pre-COVID, have we talked about maybe partnering with the Kent School District on this? Maybe doing something out at Kentwood when for it, um, cause again, or even having, if we partner with the school district, maybe moving it out to. The old Covington Elementary Site to do that thing, cause it might reduce costs a little bit if we partner with the district, but it would also be, uh, strengthening that relationship too, I don't know, we want to take part in this.
Are they still doing?
And if they, if they start to, if, pre-COVID, but and if they decide to do it again, that could be a partnership that we have.
So I would say we should, to reach out, I haven't reached out, um, what you see in front of you. Um, and other than looking at the cherry blossom. But I think, yeah, if there's partners in, I, I like that idea, that this would be kind of one of those cultural type of things, you know, that you have more maybe traditional dancers or whatever, or, you know, music and things, but. You know, yeah, maybe you have some, um, appropriate booths there too, but yeah, I'd like that, that maybe have a little different flavor than Covington Days, so. I, I guess what I'm saying here is I, I don't know if we're ready yet, but if we budget some money, I guess, you know, to investigate, you know, maybe we wanna come out with a plan, I guess, I'll look.
We can probably just put it on our work plan, like, like, read without, like, even anything important, just have to kind of come up with the.
Okay, you're talking to the chamber and the school district, well.
That'd be great.
Around.
Do a little research on what other people have done with the trail.
Yeah. Joe.
Where does Prappers stop their, cause I feel like they're pretty big.
Yeah, owned by Kohl's.
That whole.
Well, it used to be.
So the, I think the trap of sushi, that was like a, it's sectioned off, there's space there, there's Kohl's, and the other side is another scene. We also.
Or planet fitness.
Martin. Oh, wow.
It's the same, property management company that had a good, pretty nice office.
Yeah.
I have stopped and taken pictures.
No, I'm done, dude.
I did.
It's just amazing.
Yeah, I mean, I would just. So I guess, um, even, um, so on this one, you can add it without the button, just to get kind of do that plan.
Yeah, cause I mean, we're not taking, we're not adding anything new.
So how do people feel? Cause I'm kind of thinking that's where you need to do some more state work, see if the, the. Schools are interested and, you know, maybe what other teams have got, I like that idea, I guess, what I would recommend is maybe don't, do not spend the twenty thousand this time next year. We have more information. All we can do is write the amendment. Yeah.
I'd like one.
Uh, technology on how to predict blossoms.
We'll, we'll work on that.
Not to the park service or whatever.
Microsoft, Microsoft's about an hour away, I'm sure they can help us out.
They'll go out there with some heaters.
Yeah.
And I'm sure that, like, we do, we're seeing those campuses probably track every year, like, we could probably get.
They do, yeah.
On, you know, when we.
Yeah, and then we.
Yeah, we plan.
Yeah, cause they do, actually, you're right, they say it's coming, and you can, and you can, the National Parks Service, they, the title base, and they can predict it with them like a game. Yes, exactly. All right, so did we make a decision on that?
Just for more information.
All right, so the last one, um, I think Reagan and I were talking a few months back and, uh, heard that Kent was not going to do fireworks. And. It's not legal, what's that? Yeah, they stopped doing fireworks, and I said, well, you know, if it's a funding thing, can we partner with them? Cause you know, that, since we have our current fireworks prohibition, and people are always asking what are we doing, are we gonna, you know, offset that command, or are there, are there any. Fourth of July events, and so we originally reached out to Kent to say, can we partner with you on, you know, covering some of the costs of that. I don't know what they call it, but it's a little splash. And so this was written with that in mind, but subsequently we got some new information, like yesterday, and I let you kind of talk about that, so.
Yeah, I mean, we had reached out to Kent staff, probably around July fourth, they did it right beforehand, but they were busy with kind of events and much of that happening during the summer. So, um, we just got around to meeting with them a couple days ago. Um, and it's not a funding issue as to why they chose not to offer fireworks, it really has to do with safety and security, and once the sun goes down. Um, they just find the behaviors change, uh, it's really hard to manage that. It's conscious, kind of provide that event, expect it to be the same thing. Um, so we still met with them and, you know, talked through ideas and, uh, you know, was there any kind of. Partnership that would make sense, and really what it comes down to is, they don't really need anything for their event that they're doing. I do think that they're feeling some political pressure, or may receive political pressure to add fireworks, but it's not a funding thing. Um, and so if they do, they do, and they already know Covington Leavens probably go there to get shuttles from Kentwood, I think. So, um. It was a good meeting, but there was no solution. I mean, that Interway still provides fireworks on the lake.
Yeah.
That will still happen, you'll still hear about fireworks that, but it's not a public display.
So, so this last, this summer, yeah, they can't close the park.
Probably sundown.
Yeah, sundown. And, and when I originally reached out to them, it was, it's not a funding, it's a staff.
Right.
To try to staff police, and so, and some of that. And then it's like, well, we actually don't even want the park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a, it's bad.
So, so it's totally changed this. Uh, go to bed on the wall.
So I, you know. Fireworks themselves are kind of a hot topic, we've already known that, but I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to do. Laser show, like on the wall of Kentwood, something a little bit cleaner, less noisy, we could have music, something smaller, like on, if we have a big building, I mean, you know, the new trend is potentially drone. Shows, which are a lot, right, and you have to worry about birds and all that other stuff too, careful, but can we do something that's. So fun, and I, I originally was thinking that, unless they keep a mural on the white wall, then, kidding. Not valley, valley, right?
Yeah.
But maybe, cause that's downtown, I don't know, I, maybe there's a way to do something again, smaller that.
Yeah.
We still have places in the staffing situation, you should know, but.
We discussed some of those things even at our meeting, uh, because they're looking to see if there's another site that they can do something at night for. Uh, still have kind of a fireworks alternative show, or just a different site show in Kent, uh, and they're looking at drone shows and. Traditional laser light shows, but all those things I think are, are options for us here as well. I don't, I think drone shows get into spending.
Oh, no, I'm sure they do, yeah.
But.
Unless it's just one doing. Oh, fly, that's a great show. Yeah.
So even if we don't do anything with it this year, um, I would like us to keep this in mind, because when Lake Point opens, we will have a lake. We will have all the restaurants, all those businesses that will be open, and having a firework, potential firework show above that lake, there'll be lots of parking, you know.
Parking's a big issue for the lake, we're in, yeah.
Yeah, and so I, I just feel that this is a great start to, I mean, fifty thousand dollars is not gonna cover a fireworks show, because I've done fireworks, and. You're looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars just for the fireworks, and. Putting that on that lake, um, and if the restaurants are around the edge of the lake, you can just see all of those people sitting out there and buying, helping with the businesses. With that fireworks show, whereas everybody else that does a fireworks show on their lake, you can see that, there's no economic. Return on that, and this would just be, would really help our business.
I, I like the idea of having something, you know, I'm not just a, not to be pessimistic, I don't know if I'm being pragmatic, or how long it'll be before that.
Yeah.
I mean, you still know, I mean.
Well, if Toll Brothers keeps working as fast as.
They'll be here by force as well. I like, I like your idea.
Yeah, that would be like. I'm, I still think lasers and fog, and it could be a really cool experience. If, you know, especially if there's artsy people that might be on them.
So, uh, Toll Brothers to put those fountains in the lake too, who's got that incredible laser show?
So laser shows, fountains, anything else you want?
Yeah, all for fifty grand.
One, I want it stopped.
So, I'll pull it back to, so. I think there's consensus on this is something that's coming, that we're, need to be thinking about that opportunity for Fourth of July. Some type of fireworks, laser show, um. I guess I'm just asking for feedback on what we do in the interim between, you know, fifty grands and. Fair amount, um, but we, but Kent doesn't even wanna partner with it now, so what do we do? What's the, the budget's not, that number's not even.
No.
Right.
That was just a placeholder number too, because we, our deal was just two days ago, so I didn't know what to submit, so that, there's no, nothing behind that number.
So can we do more research into different options and then bring it back at a future date to see if we wanna.
Our own.
Fund it, yeah, do our own thing, yeah.
Doesn't make the value, do you?
They do wanna have a, like, a way to open this.
It was not on the Fourth of July, but anything.
Yeah, they did it like on the third.
Yeah, it was the weekend.
Yeah, there's some police staffing issues for meeting for their Friday event, cause everybody's having them, so it's impossible.
So to staff an event and staff the ready for.
For Stan, yeah.
Okay, there it is. Does it have to be on public? And if so, why? Why can it not be at CCP?
Cause it causes fire at CCP.
I don't believe that, like, no, the water doesn't stop you from fire, that's absolutely.
No, no, I.
It's a security thing, because if there's fireworks in the middle of the lake, you're keeping everybody far enough away from, but I mean, in California, they do it in large parts.
Yeah, that's just question, you don't need a lake.
I, I know, like, and so it doesn't, that was power. We can. Can we do it on the other side? Um, just, just thinking, and maybe it's not CCP, maybe it's somewhere else, but.
That's exactly what, that was my next question, but I'm not even. I don't know. I, I feel like we all get so like. Other ways to make it palatable and cleaner and less messy, you know, cleanup.
Yeah.
Anything.
I like Jeff's idea that maybe kind of like what we just said with cherry blossoms. You know, more thinking, uh, so you have a bunch of partners or, um, then look for the both the short term, what can we do now for the next five to eight years? And then what would it look like when we are, when we do have, uh, Lake Point developed? So I think that's, that's what I would recommend.
Way to like walk out like ten grand and maybe not for the share, but for the following, or do we have to do this decision next time? Just so that like, we're thinking about it now, we're culminating these ideas this year. Like, is there a way to do some small wording? Yeah, I mean.
Like we do with the equipment.
Yeah, yeah. And then, you know, obviously we ramp up into some bigger than down the road, but you start building the culture of the fourth of July, fourth of July, and what is that going to look like?
Are you saying we're going to put it in a reserve fund and start building up?
I don't know.
I, I don't know that we need to reserve fund, uh, for this, but I think what, what you were saying is in case we do something next year, should we have something?
Should we have something, even if it's not?
So, so maybe a partially fund this of ten thousand.
Yeah.
And then from the planning point of view of events, I mean, we can just kind of in our own tracking of things, know that we're at some point going to be looking at this and keep revisiting it.
Staffing this is the only thing.
I'd rather do a lot of, I mean, suggesting, keep it on the work plan. Something in the future that's doing that way to save that money for everything else.
To, to do, I mean, you know, you, we look at it, oh, we're, by the time this budget's, we've got seven months before that, but with everything else going on and all the other summer programs, I think it might be hard to do our own, put our own together by next year. At the very least, we can reach out to Maple Valley and see if there's some partnership there. But then we can do some time next year looking at our own shows, maybe to home and middle school, maybe it's a different lady.
So, that, yeah, because I think we'll have to reach out to vendors really to see like, you know, who's available, do they do things like that?
So, you may see. Decision's not made yet on if you're going to put any funding now. So if we're, if we're past that, then we can. All right. That's all I got. Thank you, everyone.
Do you want to take another file break? I don't just need time to set up.
We can do a break now and, and I'm just thinking of how this would work. We can take a break and then maybe thirty minutes to lunch or just take a lunch right now and take maybe ten, fifteen minutes, take a break. Just now that lunch set up.
And then people grab lunch.
Yeah.
Do people want to have lunch now or?
Can we push out like another thing? I don't know. Anybody starving?
No, not.
No, but you can take, you can take five minutes.
Let's take a five minute break.
Thank you all for allowing a quick break. Turn it over to Regan.
Yes, sir. Okay, so, uh, I'm going to talk a little bit about transportation funding and public safety funding. And really kind of the dire need we are going to find ourselves in if we don't do something in the next couple of years. You feeling the weight? So, um, a tool that, that the legislature gave municipalities is Senate Bill fifty-nine seventy-four that increased the amount that you could go up to on a TBD up to point three percent. It, it wasn't that high, but it also made it possible to councilmatically implement a point one percent TBD sales tax, which as you can see there would bring in about six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars annually straight into our, to our street fund. Uh, as, as we've, uh, shared with the council, um, our car tabs are decreasing. Uh, DOL is telling us that the amount of vehicles are projected that will be licensed are less. So we're, I think we put three hundred and thirty thousand in the budget next year for car tabs and that's it. That's our designated revenue source for, for streets, uh, and we don't anticipate that going up much. And so really without additional revenues, um, we're going to have to continue to take more and more out of the general fund to, uh, fund streets. So from what I understand, it's allowed to increase the. So we're, yeah, with, with a vote of the people, you can do a point three percent. Or councilmatically, you can do point one.
What were we trying to get on that?
Point two. Point two.
Point two.
Is what we've done the last three.
So, so am I hearing this right? That tabs will bring in like three fifty, you said, three thirty? Sorry, I tried to give us twenty thousand more. And then if we just did this, it would be double, just about double that? Why haven't we done this yet and gotten rid of the car tabs?
Well, we just got the authority this year to do it.
I, I understand we just got it this, but like, we should have gotten it like the day after is my thought.
We discussed it when we said to bring it back.
Why, where was I?
What it then for us, um, to, because that, that's a joke. I'm sorry, three thirty. But would it be, it would take a leap of faith, but I know we kept saying to the, to the residents, if we increase the sales tax, we could, we could take this off. If we increase, we could take this off. Can we just take it off? And put on the ballot and say, hey, we made the first move, like obviously not at the doorstep, but like and give them the option to increase, you know, point three or whatnot. Um, because when it mattered, it was, it was significant enough to be like, oh, no, we still need to keep this. It's a joke right now to, to me. Like, I know it's three thirty and we can obviously put it towards something, but when sales tax can be so significantly higher and the public doesn't trust their council, what if we just took it off? And then put it on the vote, took it to the people and said, hey.
Took it off of, let the board win, so we don't lose it.
Correct. And put it on the ballot.
Okay.
I'm sorry. If I didn't say, I, I just, that was a, no barrier, but just to give the public, because everybody's an outsider.
Oh, well, I guess one of the questions I've had is, I, I'm really having the heart thing wrapping my head around a lot of them. But how in the world are we getting less TBD? Are people just so on cars and not? I mean, I will say we did sell our old truck and now we have one less car now. So, yeah, I don't understand.
I think there could be a lot of reasons, but that's what DOL is telling us.
So there's a lot of, there's a lot of.
A, a lot of people.
Ah, okay. All right. Well. Okay. So, I mean, because it seems like there's people that are living here that are. Let's take it off. Maybe trying to get around. So, does it make sense? I mean, just seeing his ideas, like maybe, uh, you know, admirable one, but maybe we just raise it to one, point one on top of.
Well, and that's what we did last time. And I feel like we did a good job with the messaging, like, you know, if, if this point two percent sales tax increase is approved by the voters, one, it spreads it out for everyone's shopping and coverage of the streets. And two, the council will eliminate the car tab.
Well, I, I'm suggesting keep the car tab, do the point one. No ballot. Let's do it. And then.
And, and this is something, um, we could take the time to discuss today if council wanted, or, uh, I did ask Jim to put it on our summit agenda as well. Um, but yeah, there's all these different options. I have one more. Um, I like that. We can always pass an ordinance that, you know, we raise it one percent and pass an ordinance that says if this, what do we call it, initiative passes, the car tabs get removed. If it doesn't pass, they stay on. So that gets to what you're saying. We've said, we've actually put it in writing. It will, they will go away the minute it passes.
We put it in the writing last night.
No, 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 no. This would be different. This would be an ordinance.
We didn't do.
Yeah, we didn't do it. This would be an ordinance that basically would become law. Well, I'm just saying that's something we could do.
It will, they know. So, cause, cause at, at the same, like, like Carla said, where do you want to see this? X, Y, Z. They don't see it. All they see is a ballot. If that's not on the ballot, they're like.
Well, we can't put it on the ballot.
No, 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 no. No, I'm saying if the card, if the, uh, car tabs.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, that's what.
People don't read the ordinance. Most people don't read the ordinance.
It was in that, but, um, but yeah, um, the elections doesn't allow us to put something that's not in the ballot uh, on the language of it, which was the elimination.
I was just going to point out also, you guys, you probably see this, but you do the two tents and you took away the twenty yard car tab. That's about the same amount that clearly the one foot.
How?
So, so if, if we had a point two percent sales tax, it would be about one point three million.
Take away three hundred thousand.
And if you remove the TBD, you're three hundred each at a million. Where right now, we're already bringing in the three thirty. If council adopts the point one percent, that puts us in a million. Might be the street funding.
Did we, um, back multiple times and tried to pass the TBD? What is, do we have any idea how we can ascertain what a point one percent impact is to the average resident?
So we did do that actually. So with the point two percent, because we compared it to the twenty dollar car tab. And, and I think we determined the average family is spending around ten thousand something dollars on taxable, sales taxable goods. And that came out to, it was like twelve or twelve to eighteen dollars per household, um, per year.
For point one percent?
Point two.
Oh.
It'd actually be cheaper for residents.
Oh, yes. And, and that was our message is this is three to four times cheaper for residents. Yeah. Because many people have two or three vehicles.
Sure, right. So you have.
Who have one, like in a family versus a household? Dollar.
Uh, it, it was definitely under, just under twenty dollars.
Okay, okay. It was spread, but I wasn't on account. I don't remember the numbers. I remember it was cheaper. I do remember. I received that.
Is that annual point one? So next year, can we do it again?
Oh, it, it would be ongoing. Will you implement it?
No, no.
So, you know, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, if you do that, um, so we're raising the sales tax and we have some other things we're thinking about. For safety, where's that, where are we putting our sales tax at now? So we're at eight point seven, which is the lowest in the area. And so that would put the eight point.
And then we'll be at eight point nine if we do.
We did, we did. Yeah. So just something to think about. If, if, that's one of the things we promote ourselves.
I think we should promote the heck out of that. Uh, my over driver knew that we have low sales tax and they noticed it on the cost over.
So just saying that eventually we would get to do whatever else. Well, and, and the fact is, is important that out of that eight point seven, the city gets about one percent. Yeah, we get one. I know. I agree with you.
But, but that one, you'd get all of the.
Well, yes, we get one point one percent of the total eight point eight. But we'd get all of that point. Yes.
But we get all that.
So that's, uh, one option. Um, the other one obviously is the TBDs. We talked a little bit, uh, or the license tabs, talked a little bit about that.
Still going to.
Yeah.
Fifty dollars. I thought it was forty dollars. Forty and then another.
So, yeah, yeah. So we can increase the current fee without a vote by twenty. And then after twenty-four months can do again, uh, up to ten. So that would get your total. But we add another twenty, that's another three hundred thousand and put the political right, probably go, the cost of that. The political is probably not worth it. Yes. That does work as well. This is all streets.
I've asked this question before. If we got you six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year, what extra projects are we not doing now? Could you do that, do next year?
Can I answer that one?
You guys are working. I wish we were working together. I didn't, I didn't.
With Joan, you just kind of. So, so this, this is really it. So that, that top, uh, portion of this graph shows, um, what we're funding right now, where those funds are being spent. And then that eight point seven is the, what we need to address all of our current maintenance. Not, this is a new road that this is just maintenance on our streets. And we need one point seven million to have a fully pay, uh, pavement, uh, program in place. That's what we're spending right now. And we're pulling that from different. Yep. One point seven annually.
So, so additionally, yeah. An extra three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars just brings it back to what we need in that extra one point four million. Anyone got a rich relative that wants to donate?
Bird here.
Yeah.
I don't even have one that can do one.
Kevin didn't rename himself.
So, so to, so to really get on, on track with street maintenance, we need an additional one point seven million. So the point one percent, that, that gets us almost half of that, you know, it's not close. I wouldn't say it's close, but, you know, it's a step in the right direction at least that is somewhat low barrier. There's still going to be pushback, right? But it's.
So I, I, just to clarify, like, when you're talking about the one point seven million, you, you, that's to help chip out at that eight point seven?
To address all the, uh, unmet needs.
But I also, as I recollect from a big, um, two years ago, you were talking about anything that gets to perfect can be pretty expensive. So if we did it all like in a couple of years, it would be the eight point seven. If it doesn't get done until ten or fifteen years now, it's the price tag would be twenty-three million. I think at the end, if, if everything.
And, and this is a revolving issue, right? Because we're going to fix those unmet needs and then that one's going to be the next ones. Yeah, you put it down. Right now, that would, that would, uh, fulfill our maintenance needs. And then tomorrow, more maintenance needs are going to come up.
If you don't do the one point seven million now, like Beth was saying, that eight point seven, every single day is going to exponentially grow.
Now, it's not, not just ceiling, it's now we're paving, whatever. Now, the other question that we'll run into is capacity for contractors to fulfill. Because I think we have, we had that conversation, like, if you have ten, ten million dollars today, well, you can't spend it all, but you can get contracts in either, right? Because there's so much construction going on. Is that still kind of?
I mean, I think there's aspects of that you would have to, uh, work through. I mean, I don't think you would do it all tomorrow.
No, no.
Within a year or whatever.
Okay.
It would, it would just be a matter of, I think, getting up to speed initially is, okay, what's your, how much money do you have? And what are the priorities? So for a little while, you're going to be like, okay, what's the best thing for the dogs, right? So you're just not like, we can just dump it all into this one little section, maybe. Well, maybe that doesn't help us. Let's try to, let's try to extend more pieces that could last long and certain, and so you try to spread that better. So I think the initial piece, getting one of those funds, what's the best use of it?
As you know, from our street meetings, we've got, we know what streets needed. Uh, that do it for you, Joe? Uh, that do it for you, Joe?
You still haven't told me which project you would do first.
Uh, you came to one of our street meetings. We haven't gotten.
No.
So to just to pull it on that, say that on two fifty six, to give you an idea. Um, grant funds and stuff, we're, we're actually trying right now to get a grant fund for two fifty six. So that would be great. Um, keep in mind that no grants will pay for like localized roads. So. Unless it's an arterial or something along those lines, that's the only way that you'd get grant plans. They expect. Cities to pay for all of the local roads and everything, you know, other than Timber Lane Drive, you know, that's, that one they'll pay for. You know, anything spurring off of those, say, or any of the neighborhoods in like, say, Reserve or any of those places. So that's the reason why these types of things are needing for those local types of streets where we can still potentially, it's getting smaller. For, for funding that for like arterial like two fifty six and we'll continue to do that. But it's those other roads if we have no funding for. To be able to do. So we're just, we're just kind of patching.
Um, so one of the things, just kind of talking about prioritization, something that's coming out of the requirements. We're getting kind of white planning policy and regionally is this the whole equity aspect of this? And that lens that has to be built into each and every element that we are producing for twenty twenty four. So part of the climate action grant, when we're looking at our vulnerable neighborhoods, we are working um, with DEA and in it. We're not fully scoped on this, but because these conversations are just starting. Of an equity tool that then you go in and you put your projects in and then you identify what is your kind of biggest thing. Um, for the improvement that, that should be done, right? Where it not only comes to this needs of the city, but the needs of the community. So I think we're gonna get smarter in this arena over time. When we talk about prioritization, there's a lot of pre-work that we obviously have to do. I don't want to take away from the fact that Dawn has work now, that needs to be done. But I think it's just important that maybe you put that into the room and to your line of sight that those tools are gonna be things that we're gonna help.
We'll uh, jump over here to ARPA. So we wanted to put a couple of slides together to really. Make sure we're all really clear on where our. And to make accounting easy and audits less difficult. We've dumped our uh, most of our ARPA funds in the other paying part. So you can see in twenty twenty two, we put two point eight million into our police contract, some into small business grants and. In twenty twenty three, put two point nine million to help pay for our police contract, fifteen thousand. Into utility aid for a total of that five point nine million that we receive in the ARPA.
Well, we funded a bunch of one project.
So let me show you this. So, so this is where we are spending general fund dollars that were freed up. Because we paid for police contract with ARPA. Okay. So this what made the accounting much, much easier. Or so, for this, in twenty twenty two, we created this special projects reserve. And that's where the freed up general fund dollars are, uh, because we had the ARPA funds. And so you can go through there and see in twenty twenty two, we spent uh, six hundred and seventy two thousand. Uh, and on, on those projects that you were like, why aren't those on that last slide? Yeah, because they're all covered in here. And then in twenty twenty three, it's a total expenditure of four point three million. Uh, that will be covered out of this um, this reserve fund. And then uh, ha- just over half million that will bleed over into twenty twenty four. If you recall. Technically, the ARPA funds are supposed to be spent by end of twenty twenty four. We'll spend ours in twenty twenty three because they're with the police contract. And then uh, this, this is the pattern. So that ninety four thousand that it shows remaining there, that's something we're. Uh, a pot we're just holding to see what the air conditioning HVAC costs and what it's not going to be.
Are you sure it's not for an epic party or something?
And it's for another. Any questions on ARPA and how we uh, as a result of ARPA, created this special project reserve? You will notice, I'll, I'll share, you'll, you'll notice our total ARPA distributions were five point nine million. This has uh, five point seven, that's really kind of the total. The difference is that is in the special projects reserve. It doesn't have the small business grants that, that we give, some utility aid and then staffing to. That's not in that. That shows in the special project reserve. So, so decision cards that were funded out of the special projects reserve are uh, maintenance facility. Uh, eight hundred sixty four thousand from that. And uh, you know, that's a big project and one that. That we want to talk about. Go through this, then let's talk about the maintenance facility for a minute. Uh, we've got Jenkins Creek Park at one point nine million coming from the reserve fund. And Aquatic Center, their system upgrade there at twenty seven thousand. And we partially funded the equipment replacement fund that Dawn spent some time talking about earlier, um, out of the special project. So the maintenance facility, excuse me, is something that uh, we're, we need. Uh, they're growing, have grown out of their um, current space. The, the problem with it is, and we got a great lease agreement with the school district. I think we spent a thousand dollars a year or something for that property. Um, but by the time this gets built, we'll have about twenty years on the lease. So we're gonna dump three million dollars into that property. To be able to use it. We wanted to make sure the council's comfortable. Putting that three million dollars under a piece of property that in twenty years, we may not, we may have to leave. We do have an option to renew, but the school district can also terminate it.
Is there an option for us to buy the land?
If they'll sell it, right? That was our initial proposal, but they didn't want to get rid of it. Uh, and, and I think that's why they were comfortable leasing it to us, but they hadn't vetted those decisions enough to sell.
Can we extend the lease now versus waiting until term?
That's something we've, we've asked that we could do. Um, and you know, they're gonna want some benefit for that. So one of the things we've talked about is we have to run uh, water and some utility to that site. Uh, they're in the street, we gotta bring them in there, that we could connect it through, because they have another piece of property on the backside of this property leasing. So we'll say, we'll run utilities to your property if you extend the lease now. Things like that, we've talked about.
And they have, but they have nothing on that property.
No, there's nothing. But they're gonna want utilities, a big piece of the value.
Is this the um, the property that the police department is on right now?
This is just across south, across the street from Nats and News.
Okay, got it.
When you had the conversation with school district, was that when Dr. Watts was there or is it now when Dr. Bayla?
So we actually didn't do any of this through Dr. Watts. Yeah, but we worked it with their facility and, and property people. Which he was great, right? So right now, I think we go back and they're like, oh, mo- most of them may not even know this is.
Well, and one thing I would say about that too is obviously we know that a lot of things that we've heard recently, obviously. In school district and evaluating, you know, the downturn and that type of thing as far as. So this was before all the pandemic that we dealt with this. So maybe their viewpoint of, of expansion. Changes in that regard. You know, obviously, they've never really wanted to be at this location. Their whole thought is as things expand north, like the urban road and that type of thing, that's where they would let it be. But they're kind of holding this like, well, if that doesn't happen anymore or something like, that was the initial thought a number of years ago. Whether that's changed now, it's probably, it's likely to change to something.
I guess, from, from my perspective, if we have it for three years and we have the option for another three, like. That's forty years. Anything we do at that price point is probably gonna be depreciated and or maybe dilapidated at that point with use. So I don't. It seems like.
Want to make sure you were comfortable.
Because now we're spending forty grand over the course of forty years to lease this property. And I don't know, it seems like good.
So. Going off of what you're talking about the building, so I had a recent conversation with um, Dr. Bayla and, well, I guess it's not Dr. But. It is and with Dr. Barron, about the current levy that they're gonna bring out. They're not looking to build any new schools in the next probably five to ten years. Their goal is to just take what they've currently got. And upgrade their buildings. I mean, that's the plan that they've been discussing. So. Getting, I'm, I'm, I don't wanna say never assume anything, but I, I don't think there's gonna be an issue trying to get more than twenty years right now. With that, but I mean, even with what Beth said, twenty years and getting that, I, I think it's. In my personal opinion, I think it's the right way to go. We can't stay where we're at. It's just.
Well, we even had discussions like, what if we, what if we did get another portable and put it on our current site? And instead of these improvements, we just put some of our material and our equipment out there. So that would mean there'd have to be commuting back and forth, but also we'd still have to run utilities, we'd have to do grading. And that was still gonna be like a million something bucks to do all that. So that didn't seem like a feasible option. It's build of a gun.
Well, and that leaves the current property for either a future thing or sell it or whatever we. That's a discussion down the road.
So we own that, but we leased four books.
Just one point. Okay, any other questions on? So let's get into police, favorite subject lately around here. So I just wanted to go through this uh, real quick and just so we can kind of get a high view of, of our police costs. You can see. Uh, the blue is our, the blue bars there are dedicated personnel, that number. And then the yellow is our shared personnel, those parts that we share F T Vs throughout the county. And then the annual costs is a green line going up through it and total personnel is the red on top. And so you can see that number, what it, uh, if you look at the annual cost, this laser doesn't. But you can see from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three that, that um, increase right there, right? Unlike anything we've seen. Recent history with our contract. So costs are on the rise. To go up. Uh, we, we've obviously added officers with a lot of our increases. This increase does not show any officer. This does have it. This was made out. But it still shows um.
One, one belief purpose, they're not, not including the.
Like the seventeen officers, that is including the current vacancies.
So uh, B and O tax, um, obviously this is something we've talked a lot about maybe uh, with council. Uh, the subcommittee has discussed uh, this, that the top three were B and O tax, uh, multi-year levy mid lift. And the criminal justice sales tax, which Sean mentioned a little bit earlier, fifteen percent of that we have to give to the, to the county. So uh, obviously B and O, that's something that can be done uh, council mandately as well. Um, the other options need to go out to a vote. The criminal justice sales tax uh, does not get us what we need. It's about four hundred eighty thousand. Uh, a multi-year levy mid lift would, if the council sets that rate, we could set it at whatever we need to bring in. Obviously though, it has to be approved by the voters. So I'm just putting this up here as, as a way to really kind of talk about this. Um, uh, we, we've got to find a way to fund public safety because um. Uh, it's totally, the increases we're having to pay in, in uh, are just totally unsustainable. Current revenue. Uh, and you'll see that as we go a little bit further into this. In fact, I'll skip over the next slide right now. So we can talk a little bit about that. So you can see, these are just general fund expenditures, uh, right? So you've got um. Revenue sources are the blue, green, uh, yellow and red uh, bars there. And then the blue line that goes fairly flat along uh, through the red uh, graphs. That's our twenty percent fund balance. That's a policy we've set in the city to maintain a twenty percent in, in our fund balance. And then that top one, I, I think it's purple, hard to tell from here, but it's total expenditures with the included decision cards for twenty twenty three. So you can see that gap in twenty twenty three between the blue bar and the top purple line. And that's just over a three hundred thousand dollar gap that we're going to have to dip into reserves to help cover our expenses in twenty twenty three. Now you see revenues in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three are a lot higher than those mixtures and that's because of the. Once those are taken out in twenty twenty four, we're back to our normal baseline and that gap. In our revenues and expenditures keeps widening. So uh, you can see on our total, uh, sorry, our unassigned fund balance, that's the line to really pay attention to. That kind of shows us where that help is in our budget. So you can see in twenty twenty six, that line dips below our twenty percent reserve. So we won't be able to maintain that. When in twenty twenty seven, uh, there's really no money left.
And this is without a B and A tax.
This is what we have now. So obviously those are uh, important subjects. We, we've got to talk about those. We could have some discussion here. We can hold a special meeting. We can, I, I put the, a discussion for this already on the summit. Uh, we can do that, but um, you know, these are big decisions. Opportunities that the council wants to talk about then and provide them information.
Um, anything to add, so the public safety committees held a couple of. Public meetings and one with the business community and um, two, we had two with the business community and one with the public and. Got some really pretty good feedback on it, you can probably imagine that. General, you know, take on the B and O tax and the business communities and whether they prefer that we not do that. But if it can be um, guaranteed to go to public safety, um, they're more supportive of it. Went out at the last meeting that two of our biggest, um. Two of the biggest contributors are probably behind the B and O tax. And so. And then in that public meeting with the, just the general public, you know, we asked them, you know, why not? What would you support? Well, I think one woman said, you know, I think I have to do a little bit of each, you know? And so I think. What it shows me is that we continue to do the outreach and really connect with people and explain this. You gotta, it takes a lot of time and effort. They get it. They, they, they get it. This is something, you know, this money just doesn't come out of thin air. So they're supportive and I think we have to seriously. We haven't finalized our report for the council yet, but I think we gotta seriously look at those three options for, for paying for our public safety. I'm not.
So. If we did this, could we guarantee an improvement to our businesses' current state of affairs? Break-ins, the unsafety going, you know, lack of feeling safe going to dumpsters, customers not having their horses stolen like. Or would it to be to maintain a status quo?
So because of that huge increase in the contract cost, some of it's going to have to pay for.
Right, hence why I'm asking.
I would hesitate saying we will guarantee that your business is gonna get criminalized like that, right? But what we can say is we can guarantee additional presence and additional um, follow through and additional. Work with such and this kind of thing. We can guarantee what we can control. Outside of that, um, who knows?
Yeah, my fear would be making a move like this, which to me is a, a big move. Um, and not getting the results that are expected by the people bearing the tax, which trickles down to residents. Which trickles down to residents, obviously, at the end of the day. So I was in some of the meetings that you're referring to, Sean, and I agree that in those meetings and for the people that we've talked to, the response was pretty good. But that's a very small amount of people, residents, and it was a very, I was surprised at the B and O, the special meeting just talked about the B and O tax. Which was really put on by the chamber, how few business owners in there it was for me to hear. And so I, I agree that the people we talked to were, were pretty much in favor of you gotta do what you gotta do, but I don't think it represents the whole community, either residents or businesses.
We did do the survey.
That's true, and I, and that.
Even that.
Kind of like. Yeah.
Really, our, our data analysis is all sample, I think it's so hard to get anything above a twenty percent turnover suspension, right?
Go ahead.
Okay. Um so I think one of the other things that we were talking about, like mentioned, I, we're gonna talk more about it right in the end of our report and things, but. So I don't know how much to go over here, but, but there are other options within the B and O percentage and things, because it, it will impact different. I thought the same thing that you thought, well, well, it's gonna pass on to residents, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of healthcare professions that are locked in contracts and they can't change their pricing. So it has a, it has a different impact within that type of business, and so like, how do we, you know, we could, and you, so there's some things to be thinking about if council, how, if, if or how. We all know that, but I think it's really helpful to have graphs and charts like that. And I think the other thing is to, I'm, I'm gonna just use the little M and M story on Eight Mile, right? Like whether you like Rattan's or not, this young man went out and he moved on stage, he went and laid all of the facts out, even the dirty things and the things that weren't pleasant. Because if you don't get ahead of it, people are gonna assume you're trying to hide it. And so whatever things that we talk about, you know, whether it's, if we don't wanna raise it, we gotta cut services, no one wants to cut services everywhere else, right? It used to have a certain level of whatever, whatever it looks like or something. It's certainly an option, but it's not very powerful for a lot of people. So that's where you put the ball back in your court, if you don't want that, what are you willing to give up? Nothing? Okay, then, this is what we have to do. So then, so we're just being transparent about what our city will look like and whatever things we get or whatever. And the other option too is that if we can start increasing our retail, we'll get more sales tax revenue. Like if we can make it a better place for businesses to come, we don't necessarily have to raise taxes if we're getting more sales tax, if we're just a good economy scale, so we can start introducing.
It also creates more work, right?
Well, it does, but I mean.
You hope, you hope it just pays for itself.
Correct.
I have three questions, one, when, when do you think the report's going back? We'll be back in time to discuss at the summit.
So. Council.
Oh, great.
That's due on Monday.
Yeah.
So I, I have some.
Okay, okay.
But I'll tell you, we'll give a teaser, uh the recommendation on funding sources is from the committee is that they need to meet with the council as a whole and have their discussions. So there's no specific uh funding recommendation coming up. So that's why I put it on the summit agenda.
Then the other thing on B and O tax of talking with the city, it can't one day, you know, the B and O tax for roads, um which then morphed into other things. They had a lot of outpouring from small businesses because of B and O tax that hurt them. So they created an exclusion if it was under a certain amount, which while it was very minimal effect to the city, it made big political kudo for, for that.
Well, and it's a bit impact for those businesses.
It is.
Yeah.
That's right. And then i- if we were to go with a point two percent B and O tax, I know that's to cover a lot of the um upcoming overhead that is gonna hit us from King County. How, how many additional officers could that lead to?
So let's say we bring in one point five, um there's going to, we're going to need to hire probably half to three quarter time person to manage that, that's have to be managed to manage. Uh so you know, that would take, I don't know, eighty thousand, something that out of it. Um and so uh and then we add in our increased costs, which are six hundred thousand something next year, so that was half of it gone, you know, right there. Uh so I would say you could hire probably another two officers and, and implement some program.
Okay, that's, that's still good.
Yeah, we need a tangible.
That's off the top of my head.
Right.
But no, it doesn't, yeah, okay.
Um I don't think they're coming to be helpful, I think, you know, I mean, it's not like our businesses are gonna ever leave another city that I'll be one of that coming. Um because that's something that I hear people, oh, our business is gonna leave, it's just taxes, but for the whole minutes, I'm not trying to.
I, I will say, that's not the messaging, and there are cities that don't have it, I think maybe they don't. But if they're gonna go out, they're gonna, they're gonna have a B and O. Um I, the, the message I think has been really, really clear, like Sean said, nobody wants a B and O, but if it's gonna improve public safety in our downtown, we'll pay for it. And I think there are one, uh one comment, you know, our survey that said no, under no circumstances, but everyone else seemed like they would.
And, and I think there was also another really keen observation made by a business owner that said, we're gonna end up paying for safety one way or the other. We either, we either front load it and try to prevent it by having these measures, or we keep getting hit and our insurance rates go up and you have. But this provides a much better experience if you're not.
Yes.
Right, exactly, and that's, that's a cute thing, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Not because of price. If we, if we eventually, I feel like the businesses, the moment they start paying for it, they will be immediately. So do we have the, the availability to divert what is existing into, to prioritize our businesses while those eventually come in? Because like.
So you say.
Even if we have the funds, can we get the police?
One of the two options at the time, so there's no one to divert to do more. And I think our, our businesses understand the process, that once they start paying the B and O, they're not consuming. And it takes us nine months just to hire them.
Do they, I feel like they really need to understand that, because they're like, do they really? Yeah, you know what I mean, like, hey, we're paying, where's that extra officer, we're trying, but I'm paying. So you, you know what I mean, like that, that's just something that, I don't know, we need stress to whomever to, you know, King County, but, but we specifically did this for this very reason. Give us answers or whatnot, but. So I didn't bring the, would make big, some of the difference holder, but when we started talking about the B and O tax, I went online and looked up all of the cities uh in county that are charging a B and O tax. Aside from some on the east side, um those that are around us are either at one percent or zero. So if a company is looking at where, where could I put my, my business? Maple Valley has none, Auburn has one, Brenton has one, I believe Federal Way may be the other one. So it, my only concern about the two percent B and O tax is that it isn't competitive for the businesses to our local community. When I say local, I mean Auburn has, I mean, Maple Valley, Black Diamond, yeah, and it definitely hit out. Um can you guys come away with those two percent?
Yeah, but first, did you look at each category, because I think the categories are different.
You're right, yeah, each category is different.
Some cities have a head tax on top of the.
Yeah, I, I think.
Rent and rents can't be talked about.
Some of the categories are point one percent, some are point two percent, uh and then, and then some of them have a head tax as well.
And category, you mean, like sector, like, yeah, okay, you got it.
Because you can change, with, it has to be the same within each category, but um so, so the reason for the point two was because uh we need a considerable amount of money uh for this. And it can be done systematically, if you go above a point two, it's got.
Okay, and what is the head tax?
So, go ahead.
So the, there's a percentage or a flat dollar amount depending on the city. And however many employees you have, you pay that as a tax to the city.
You remember Seattle, they're pretty controversial, right?
But so when rent enacted, they had very little pushback because it's being dedicated to certain funds, uh right? And I can't remember if the head taxes to transportation or public safety. But they actually worked with the chamber, they worked with local businesses and bowling stuff on, but certainly didn't have a problem.
I, I did like the, the option to go by, you know, under a certain threshold and they wouldn't be like, our smaller restaurants, we don't have very many, but. Um the minimum wage is going up in January, but they're almost all minimum wage.
Yeah.
Labor workers, um they, you know, were hit hard by COVID and then like mom implemented B and O tax. So if it could be less for those segments, um or that would be easier, okay?
And that's the conversation that we, we need to have with council. So then what's this, you know, because theoretically we could be on some, but okay, brass tacks now, what do we really wanna do? Yeah, it's once, once.
Okay, and this is all for public safety, right?
That's basically what the message we've been.
I think the things to remember, we talked about, you know, which businesses and, and sectors of business do we want to exempt, um each exemption increases our.
Yeah, of course. Yeah.
Um but I do wanna point this out too, I feel like on this B and O tax, the level of transparency um from the city has been exceptional.
Yeah.
And, and I, i- if you're a business, you have had every opportunity in the world to comment on this, show up and speak, which is great.
Yeah. Um, no, I was just gonna pull this for lunch.
Oh.
Go ahead.
No, I was just.
You're, you're, you're standing between lines.
All right, I got one question, but it's got fifteen parts.
Yeah.
Where's the duct tape on?
Yeah. The only thing, um. Uh Seattle imposed a soda tax, you know, and some of these special use taxes, and we list, always list what we can do, but how does Seattle get to do that? And what does that mean and, and what do you, and what can it go to, you know?
Your carb tax?
I mean, that's what we should.
Taxes is just general fund dollars.
Yeah.
I think they put it into the.
But is it a, and it's a off the top, it's just, you're gonna pay a umpteen amount, I mean, so I'm just wondering if we've limited what we think we could do. I'm not saying we should, but I'm like, are there special tactics when you say, let's go to public safety?
There are not many, yeah.
Yeah.
Other than the soda.
So we can do something like that. Yeah, that'd be the end.
Soda taxes are not a revenue generating, they're more of a fee.
Yeah.
Buy a lot of soda.
Well, that gets me to the swag line, so.
So our next item is to review the budget forecast, so it's noon, so what do you wanna take about? Krista needs five minutes to set up lunch, take what, twenty minutes to grab lunch, and does everybody wanna do a working lunch?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How much time do you wanna take to grab lunch and come back?
You wanna start up again at twelve thirty?
Sure.
Perfect.
All right.
Thanks.
All right, so we're gonna adjourn for lunch till twelve thirty. Thank you. Welcome back uh from our lunch break and uh to our budget workshop, gonna turn it over to King, oh, Reagan.
I just wanted to talk before we go to the case, yeah. So that we're clear, um councils, um surgeon on public safety and transportation funding, bring back to discuss at the twenty twenty summit. You know what we have?
To bring what to the summit?
Um uh transportation and public safety.
We wanna do it sooner.
Yeah, you don't get it sooner, people can be started.
Uh it's only a couple of months out, so I don't think it makes too much of a difference, but it's up to time. For. Can you say obvious? I mean, I say it's because that's like literally all we've done in one block day, so. Um. Honestly, with the B and O, I don't know what more you can, I, I honestly don't at this point. Um with um like uh multi-year levy mid lift, we haven't done any survey and anything like that, but I mean, we pull the same results, it's increased funding for public safety, we could have the same type of.
We waited till the summit, that's not gonna create new issues and give us more time to talk about.
Fine, right, Chris?
Okay. Council did with waiting to the summit then?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Um and what's reflected on those changes worksheets is the police officer moving out of the base budget into the decision card, and that's a decision card that I gave you that other worksheet earlier. And then there was a couple of aquatic center decision cards, the lobby and then the office space um improvements that were actually supposed to be funded out of the aquatics reserve fund. I didn't take them out of there, so I corrected it on this changes worksheet, the decision card said I was going to. Those are just a couple of changes that we've seen so far, the next one that'll come back, we'll have the ball on. So this is the general fund, and this is the general fund with changes, and it also has the ball in it, that we just did, as well as the officer that I was talking about, moving them down to the section. So just kind of reminder how the four cap works. We've got our beginning fund balance for twenty twenty-two and. Uh that is what's left over from twenty twenty-one, what was left revenue over expenditures, that's what we're starting with. Then we have our revenue section and we kind of go through some major revenue sources, kind of like what we did last Tuesday, all those revenue sources that we mentioned. The sale tax, property tax, utility tax, those are kind of our main revenue sources. Then I put some of the bigger ones in there, like the local criminal justice, and then the rest are kind of done by category, so licenses and permits, interdominal avenues, kind of for certain defined individuals. And then we break out what the aquatic methodic revenues are and we. So there's a couple of things that I'll point out, just in the revenue section, is we see the charges for services, you see the, these are millions, that's the three point five million in twenty twenty-two and the three point nine in twenty twenty-three. And then it drops back down to six hundred thousand in twenty twenty-four, those are the two years of ARPA funds that were recognized, and so that's why those are, those are really big, and then we drop them. We have, you know, just our normal increases for sales tax, we tend to budget real conservatively, so we, we assume that there may be a decent slowdown in construction. Um hopefully, our retail keeps growing at the pace it's growing, our food services dip every once in a while, so we kind of, we really budget conservatively on the red line for sure. Uh the property taxes, what's included in here is for next year, it's three point one four million. Our maximum levy, which I went over with you guys on Tuesday, was the three point one eight four million. I always ratchet it down by about thirty million dollars when I actually put it in the budget, because we have about thirty thousand dollars of uncollectibles each year that, that don't come in. So cash-wise, I don't ever really see that full levy, eventually I will, it's levied on their property, it may take them ten years to pay it and they'll pay it, but cash-wise, I, I kind of budget it just a little bit lower. Utilities classes generally tend to stay pretty flat unless we see some light rate increases or things like that, or have a super cold winter and everybody's using their key or super hot summer, that type of thing, but not see a ton of growth in the revenue. Local criminal justice, that's just a portion of uh sales taxes actually collected by King County and we get a portion of that, that's a relatively flat also. Licenses and permits, minor licenses and permits and the general. Minor licenses and permits in the general fund, business licensing, um, some animal control licensing, things like that, again, those stay relatively flat. Intergovernmental, intergovernmental revenue, these are the ones that are just, are the ARPA fund. Moving forward, these are really our state shared revenues that we see, so liquor board excise tax, liquor board profit, some criminal justice funds that come in, and then any grants that we have. And any grants we have, I always back out uh, one-time grants in the future years, so I'm not sure. For goods and services, these are really our inter-fund service payments, and again, those are the um, executive personnel, legal and finance that we charge the street funds, swim fund and development services, so those are our revenue to. Funds and forfeitures, these are our court fees that we collect, and just a reminder, we turn around and basically the county with full a hundred percent of our revenue to pay for their services, plus they send us about a hundred thousand dollar bill each year to cover those. And then aquatics fees, not what it seems, we kind of talked a little bit about earlier, they're back up to pre-pandemic levels, so. Miscellaneous, so what's in here is kind of interest income, um, technology surcharge that we're using, as well as. That's what it is actually, interest income and technology surcharge, so just some minor stuff in there. Operating transfers in, we just had one, general fund doesn't usually get money from other funds, we're the ones that are actually pushing it out. So this was just a CIP project that we had given to some funds to um, in the past, and they didn't use it all, so we can, we got it back. Furloughs and wages, so this includes our four point four percent COLA for next year. It's quite a big jump between twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three, about seven hundred thousand dollars. And what that's made up of, not only the COLA, but it's also made up of, we've got potential retirement happening next year, and that's got to pay out to it. We have full staffing, so the community development department, code enforcement, things like that. And also getting the aquatic center and recreation divisions back up to the pre-pandemic FTE count, so that's what those increases are. Personnel benefits, we saw minor increases between two and five percent, I think is what it ended up being, or our medical increases. That includes vision and dental, so that's why there's a little. Supplies actually went down for next year, supplies were up, were up this year because we had that seat grant. Um, so that bumped up our supplies a little bit, it was offset on the revenue side, that was the thing that helped pay for like the camp adventure. Capital outlay, we have some minor capital outlay next year, it's um, a big chunk of it is um, finishing up a summer masons like IT project we had going and like our phone system replacements, we have a couple of things that we'll do for next year. Debt service is our uh, building lease, and any storage units or anything like that, we have coffee machines that all fall into debt. And then our central services, this is the one I was explaining uh, last Tuesday, where we charge like the building lease, bottled water, the liability insurance, we spread those amongst the other funds and they contribute back, and it actually lowers our general fund expenditure. So it's not seen as a revenue, like the inter-fund service payments are, central services, the money coming from other funds just offset for. We'll spend a little bit more time on this one, I'll buy it, other services and charges, this is where we're seeing that big increase for our public safety. So that's a lot of that just included in there, uh, that's got a uh, ten percent COLA plus about a hundred and forty thousand dollars in retro pay for twenty twenty two. And then moving forward, I believe it's a four percent COLA for twenty twenty four. And they were trying to spread out the risk management costs, so they took, it was a half a million dollars to spread it over five years. So not only do we have the COLA, but we have an extra hundred thousand dollars that we'll be paying for the next five years as they spread that out, instead of just hitting with us just in one year. This is a reminder, I took the police officer, detective, sorry, the detective out of the. Uh, debt service transfers, so we talked about this before too, where our refunds at King and have just been exceptional, which is fantastic now that the thing, everything's starting to slow down a little bit with those mortgage rates increasing and everything else. So uh, we haven't had to use any general fund dollars this year or next year towards our debt service payment, which is great. I have enough uh, put away right now to pay this year's and next year's and not have to touch any general fund dollars. And then I'm hoping at the end of twenty twenty three, that hopefully mortgage rates go down and it'll pick back up. Um, but this is what we anticipate moving forward for three fifty six in twenty twenty four, the general fund will have to contribute some. And again, we, we budget that pretty conservatively, so hopefully, I think our refund could fit that expectation. And then the reason why you see the drop between twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five is that's because public works trust fund loans are paid off in twenty twenty four. And it's just pretty exciting, but this is the first year that I have, I don't have a debt service payment on my forecast, because our bonds have been paid off in twenty twenty seven, so. These are the things that get more excited. We already kind of went over these transfers, um, the biggest transfer that went out was for the purchase of the two SOCO properties, but they came out, came out of the town center reserve fund. And ongoing, it is really just the street funds and um, the public arts, um, moving to the CIP fund are our only two transfers that we're projecting. This budget strategies line was me adding in the pickleball. I'm not gonna, that's kind of hard to see the, the black, the red there, but the reason this looks so darn good right now, your, your revenues over expenses is because that ARPA funding's in there, so um, it, it kind of masks it a little bit, but I'll show you down below how like you can really tell that our unassigned fund balance is dropping in that graph that Reagan already showed you, just shows it perfectly. So for the decision cards, again, we've gone over all of those. I will show you without that. So again, for twenty twenty three, it shows that we're dropping one point four, but a lot of that is using up those special projects reserves. A little bit of aquatics reserve, a little bit of parks reserve. But you can really see moving forward after those ARPA funds are taken out of the account, that we really do have an issue. And Reagan had kind of asked me, how would you grade the city right now? And I'd say we're probably like a solid B because we're talking about how to fix this moving forward. But every year we dump, I would say we're going down in grade, because we're really, really truly are dipping into that. This is kind of one of those analogies when you're at home and you're like, wow, this is the one major expense that hits us that makes me homeless. You know, like that living from paycheck to paycheck, like that public safety hit that we took, it just wasn't something we were anticipating. And um, it really shows you how fragile a budget can be. So our fund balance is, again, sixteen point one million, it's incredibly healthy. We've been so fortunate that you guys have put so much money into those reserve um, line items, and that's given us so much more of a buffer. Um, but let me go over kind of what those are. So we currently, um, at the end of twenty twenty three, we've got one point seven four three million in aquatic center reserve. The only thing that we took out of there this year was those two aquatic center lobby and the office improvements, those just um, really minor decrease there. Debt service reserve, but we always keep one year of debt service, um, just kind of reserved, just in case. And so every year that change is just based on whatever our debt service payment will be, so you can see it goes down in twenty twenty four, because those public works trust fund loans are paid off and I won't have to have that extra two hundred thousand, so. And then the HB fifteen ninety, those are the funds that we currently um, have put away for the construction and also to pay for Darren's time, our community care navigator specialist. Specialist, I know, I can't get it right. Um, so every year I reserve that sales tax, so the sales tax comes in, I reserve it so that they're restricted funds and I just take out Darren's base budget, so it's growing going forward. And then we got the parks reserve, um, again, we just had to use a little bit of that this year, about forty thousand dollars for the Jenkins Creek Park decision card. It was approved, but that was a pretty good deal with the one point nine we got to take from the special projects reserve, so. My police contract reserve, that one is being zeroed out because I'm anticipating that's included in my other services and charges above, and I'll be using that next year. That's the retro pay that we're expecting, well, it's about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And the special project reserve shows that there's six hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars left out of twenty twenty three, and that was on that slide where it had the twenty twenty four dollar amount. It's three hundred eighty thousand dollars going to the street funds, um, human services. Town center reserve, and we didn't touch that this year, vehicle reserve, we have not touched that this year. So my unassigned fund balance is eight million, and what unassigned means is we don't have that currently reserved towards any use. And that's what we really look at when we're looking at this twenty percent fund balance target, and that was set by council um, several years ago. But that is our policy to at least have twenty percent fund balance in the general fund, so. Where we are right now is, if I'm looking at the unassigned fund balance, if you follow it across, you really can see it's dropping. So it's going from eight million down to seven, down to five, down to three, down to three hundred seventy one thousand. If we want to burn through all of our reserves and not have those be our priorities anymore, I can get you out a few more years. But if we really want to keep those funds locked up and just rely on our unassigned fund balance, then I really do have a problem starting in twenty twenty six. And I will be first to admit, we definitely budget conservatively, but this is um, a dollar amount, I don't think I can get this out of creatively.
Let me clarify, when, when basically budget conservatively means that our revenue projections are very conservative. We will most likely bring in more than what we. But this is a really safe thing for correlating that with our expenses.
I mean, that, we're dipping into the red in twenty twenty six, because we budget those conservative revenues, maybe that's gonna be twenty twenty seven, but it's, it's real and it's definitely something. So, uh, the very bottom line, where you see the three thirty four, I was just trying to give myself a line where I could really see how much my unassigned fund balance is going down each year. So that's really the, just the decrease, just so I could see it, it's got a quick level. Any questions on the general? So there's sixteen million dollars in fund balance, half of it is your reserve fund and the other half is an unassigned.
Right.
Yeah, towards the twenty percent, yeah. Any other questions on general? The street is kind of laid out the same way, uh, licenses and permit is the Comcast franchise agreement that we have. That stays really, really flat each year, we don't really see a lot of growth in that, um, seems like at some point cable prices go down, even though our population goes up. So the, the growth kind of stays flat, the street field tax, that's a, a state revenue that comes into us, that a hundred percent was structured to streets. Uh, the TBB, vehicle license data, then we've talked about that, we're spending three hundred thirty thousand dollars this year, next year. And then just a minor grant that we received this year, and miscellaneous in the fund is just the interest income. Our operating transfers in, uh, these are coming from the general fund. Part of it's three hundred eighty thousand dollars for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four are coming from the special projects reserve. And so that's, that's wonderful, that helps us for the next three years, but the general fund's got to pick that back up starting in twenty twenty five. Furloughs and wages, again, just the increase for the COLA and increase for the medical. Supplies stayed relatively fat, flat in the financial fund. Again, same with other services and charges, not a ton of growth in this department, because they're working with finite amount of resources. I think Dylan already talked about this one, but there was an operating transfer out that just helped support a couple of CIP projects. So then we went over the decision cards. I would say what I tend to do in the street fund, or what I do, is I give them whatever they need from the general fund to have them just need their fund balance. So this is tied directly to the general fund, and I just kind of zero it out until the street fund is just exactly at ten percent. And that's exactly what the general fund transferred, so as their costs grow, that general fund transfer grows too. Any questions on this?
Um, Casey, so the ten percent, and I probably have this confused, but earlier you said that council wanted to see a twenty percent.
So for the general funds.
Okay.
The street fund, oh, sorry.
But so street fund.
It's a little lower because um, the general fund supports them, you know, through their subsidies, so we keep it a little bit lower, because if we ever had to give them more funds, it would come from the general fund. Development services, so development services is a little bit of a different animal, animal as Selena's kind of talked about before, but we generally don't project past the next budget season. It's so cyclical and it's so based on market demands that it's really hard for us to forecast, so. Another thing I would, I know she's probably already said this, but we have a lot of money that comes in one year, that'll be for the work for the next year. So we keep a relatively high fund balance in this department, or this is a special revenue fund, we keep a high fund balance just to account for those fluctuations, when the work comes in one year, the work gets done next year, or the revenues come in one year, the work gets done next year. So we keep with a higher fund balance.
Casey, can I just add, so while finance from the budgeting purposes only doesn't go out that far, I will say that CD generally tries to forecast out three years. So we can kind of track some of that out, um, again, watching that cycle.
So licenses and permit revenue, um, the building permit, charges for goods and services, these are um, the land use stuff as well as those mitigation fees that she was talking about, and we'll see them on both sides, so there will be um, fire impact. And now no school mitigation, but school mitigation on both the revenue and the expenditure side, as I'm taking them in and I'm pushing them. Going into revenue is interest income, we have a reason this is negative, is our market value of some of our investments, which is the way that the economy is right now, our interest is actually negative, so, not that, it's not like a cash thing, but it's like, I have to adjust it based on the market value, but next year, we're hoping to do it. Furloughs and wages, again, we kind of already went over this, as she's getting staff back out, those numbers are increasing. By other services charges, and again, this is where you see that big increase there, but it's also in the revenue side, so whatever comes in. That's the one-time decision card. And there, I mean, fund balance, they have a fifteen percent um, by policy for their fund balance, and we're currently at two point eight million. So even though we're dipping into fund balance to get some of these projects coming through, they still have a really healthy fund balance. Questions on development services? So for the swim fund, that's surface water management fund, I do it a little bit differently, the rest of them I use um, fund balance. Um, but for the swim fund, their fund balance includes all their capital assets, it includes all the pipes in the grounds and all of the facilities. And so I just use cash, because I just want to know like exactly how much do they have then? The customer charges, this is the drainage utility fee that um, we charge that shows up on your property tax statement, portion of that uh, or the drainage utility fee comes to the city. And I will mention that in twenty twenty three, that is the last year of our adopted rate increase that we have. And so that's why going forward, it remains relatively flat, just increases based on population. Charges for goods and services, not a lot of growth here, this is actually for our street sweeping contract, and this is what Maple Valley pays us as their portion of PDB on our contract. Miscellaneous just in terms of, and the transfer in for twenty twenty three, again, is that special projects reserve, that was a four hundred and twenty thousand dollars that council wanted to fund, but really. Project, so. Oh, and and I will say some of the other transfer coming in is for the the fleet purchase, that decision card for the the fleet. salaries and wages, and super minor increases, but uh what how John was talking about, just cleaning up the splits that we have. Personal benefits, not a lot of increases there. Same with supply, other service station charges staying relatively flat. Capital outlay, he had kind of went over the projects that they have in pipeline and then just interest there. And we have his vision cards, the big one being the maintenance shop. That swims portion of the maintenance shop. And again, they are looking really healthy. So their any cash balance is two point six. This is a fund balance target, but still we look at it at twenty percent and they are staying relatively healthy. Again, that would dip relatively quickly if they really get out there and do some more C I P projects. This this keeps a minor C I P in. We only currently have in the model two hundred and fifty a year. And you can see that really this is one project, that four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so this two hundred and fifty is probably a little low. I mean, it probably should double. Any questions on this one fund? Really, that did as far as the forecast goes unless anybody has any questions on any revenues, expenses, reserves.
Secrets, very pot of money.
We'll do a secret, we can't tell.
All right, yeah.
I mean, Powerball's eight hundred and twenty five million dollars right now. What are the odds of you go win that?
The only other thing that I could use direction on, and it would take a little bit of conversation, but um is our property taxes. So we kind of went over them over them on Tuesday and uh the the levy that the county gives us includes that bank property tax from your prior plus this year's one percent and new construction. Just um maybe kind of getting an idea of which way the council may be leaning, just to prepare those ordinances. I can have several ordinances prepared. That's totally fine, but if the council wanted to have any discussion on that, that would be.
You explain to me that you bank.
Sure.
If we were to take the bank, does that take more from our residents this year?
That would be, yes.
Correct, right?
In twenty in twenty twenty three, twenty twenty three. So that's when it gets that. So it's basically the council, yeah, decided not to do it last year. The county lets us still have that capacity for the future. It's it's nothing they're holding and we can't go back and get last year's. It's just moving forward.
You don't have to take it.
Yep, you don't have to take it.
So I was gonna ask how much we if we took everything that was banked and added what how much?
If we took everything, if we took the bank capacity plus our one percent that were allowed plus new construction, we're about three point eight four million. Uh if we don't take the bank capacity, that's about thirty thousand dollars, as well as the one percent is another thirty thousand dollars.
We'll look at additional sixty thousand.
That's really what you're talking about. You're talking about the thirty thousand dollars that you could recapture with the banked, plus the one percent is about thirty thousand as well.
And then sixty thousand spread across every resident.
Yep.
That also. Every household, but does that also go towards merchant?
Yes.
Okay, so that's split across the entire city at sixty thousand dollars.
Correct. So for a typical household, I for a typical household, I think if I looked at it, it would be about um eighteen dollars if you took it.
Yeah, above.
Eighteen dollars a year.
A year.
Yeah. Above fifty a month. So you'd see nine dollars on each property tax coming in.
And we did the the average.
Yeah, my concern with continuing to bank it is it compounds and it's more of a risk at that point for residents. I I mean, I get banking, it's just thirty thousand dollars. I also, yeah, taking it's just thirty thousand dollars, but sixty, if we make it again, then we'll have ninety. And at some point, I'm concerned it'll pull the trigger because we'll need it.
Yeah, well, here's here's the fear, though, is that. Regan told us in her in the weekly update, so that next year, the county's already come back and go, this is value, it's a twenty two percent increase. So that's going to be a large hit. That's going to be a large hit in twenty twenty four. Yeah. Yeah, but it's going to be twenty two percent higher and you know the county's going to take their portion, the state will take their portion.
That that is, I identify a philosopher, there's some cities that they did for a decade, right? And we can do that, and then implement it in one go, you're going to have a lot bigger impacts on on that than an incremental small.
But we can just take part of that thing.
Yeah, you have to.
Yeah, go on, I'll take it.
Yeah, just leave it there forever.
I I don't.
I don't think it's possible to leave there forever.
I think you should bank it. Yeah, that's.
Make it again.
Yeah, I don't think you should take. It's only thirty thousand, sixty thousand dollars. But I can be persuaded, but uh. Double it. Take it all.
Quit triple it.
Yeah, so which is why we want.
That's that this next year.
Next year, next year, yeah, but not, but not going to stay. For a while, but.
Property value is going down next year.
No, going down.
They're they're going down. Yeah, mine doubled.
Oh.
Your your your.
Yeah.
My valuation.
Yeah.
Here, but property value is seeing a start. Well, okay, yes, so if you go to sell your house, the value is down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then that triggers a one percent increase. And if we take the one percent increase, that means they get two percent increase.
Well, the one.
Is that right? So it's sixty thousand.
It's it's a little more complicated than that because of inflation, but to put into numbers, it would be a sixty thousand dollar a year increase in profit.
To the whole city.
For the one.
So if you had eighteen dollars, the average property would see eighteen dollar increase next year.
Based on the six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars value.
Right of your house, more or less.
Um I just think from the, you know, it's not that much.
It's not. I just worry it grows. It's you're playing with fire.
I'm worried about that. Yeah, you know, again, we're talking about other causes. This was one that we just said, ah, we don't have to take. We can, we can actually eat it. Eat three years of the one drinker.
Right.
And uh I'm, I think, from a political standpoint, you don't have to take. Before that, you just say, we'll move on. So.
And I think we feel like we don't have to keep banking.
Yeah.
So I I mean, again, I. Not that much, but I think politically it looks good. They're not, they're not raising their property value again.
We're not.
But we would, yeah.
Their property, people's property taxes, because of, right? And so us saying we're not going to take one percent, we saved the community thirty thousand dollars, that's not something they're going to do. No, I don't.
But we can say politically.
They wouldn't notice. We did.
And we could say to the public, you didn't raise. No, that's 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 what I'm, so maybe they won't notice or will, but when asked, what'd you do about the property back? Yep.
And then they're going to call us and say, well, why'd they go up then?
Yeah.
No, I know. I'm just saying.
When they go, here's the phone number. If you get a call in.
The city, we didn't raise the city's.
City's portion, yeah.
And they'll ask you how much? It was eighteen dollars. And they're going to go, why?
So what if we maybe talk about the two separately? Is there support to um take the bank bank capacity or leave?
I'm fine taking the bank.
That's not it. I have a lot of complicated things, but me, it kind of matters if we're going to take the the new one percent or not. Because if we're going to go forward and take the one percent.
Probably better place to start.
Then it's, but to me, then it's better to just go forward, take the one percent, but don't but don't take the bank. And then we can tell, I know it's only thirty thousand, but we can tell them, we opted not to go back and and charge what we could have charged last year. But we do have to assess this new one percent. And is this going to pay for public safety?
It's like, this is.
Thirty thousand, thirty thousand, it's not, it's paying for it very well.
Yeah. Somebody.
Consider the job.
Right. There's a lot of uncertainty and there's always uncertainty, but you don't know what's going to happen. But but I think it speaks to us saying, we're evaluating its conditions and, you know, nobody likes to raise, you know. We'd be great not to raise it at all, but we know that we're not, there isn't, there isn't need and, you know. And then if we let it go, I think we have, wasn't it ten years to use it? Like, say, like to change the point, like if Portland council turns over in six years, they go, we're going to go back to that. I don't know.
Oh. You mean the bank's capacity?
Yeah. There's a.
I don't think there's the. Yeah.
No, maybe. Okay. Okay. Yeah, but it'll do.
It might pay for a pop.
So I think if you're thinking like, what's the greatest benefit to the city to bank it and then Portland, we need it. I I don't know that that's the greatest benefit as opposed to having a kind of incremental um portions each year. I think that's a greater benefit for us. Helps us know how to account and prepare for it, helps them to know what to anticipate. If it's if it's um uh something where, you know, the council wants to get some political capital, hey, we we didn't raise this for you, then that's something you can do. But I think planning around, let's bank it all, probably isn't the best budgeting method for doing this.
You have to look at those.
I mean, you think about the two years ago that wasn't banked. I mean, there's sixty thousand plus last year's bank. That's another thirty. That's ninety thousand.
Right, because it adds up each year.
Each year it adds up, so it's not just thirty thousand. So every year you let it go, it compounds. So you're now have lost ninety thousand in two years.
Which.
Right. I mean, and if we're talking about political capital, it's, hey, we didn't raise your property taxes for two, three years straight. You guys want to.
Did you give more of a laugh there?
Hey, you and I ran against no one. But I'm just saying, if that's what they were talking about, political capital, that might work for when we want to do a T V D. But when you do the numbers of like, hey, we saved you guys at the city thirty thousand dollars, now we're asking for six hundred and seventy five thousand. It's not, they don't weigh out. Yeah, it's not going to weigh out, so.
So what I'm, I mean, sure, it's only looking at if we took both the one percent and the bank capacity, it's only sixty thousand dollars. But I'm looking at that red line, looking out year to year to year, sixty thousand dollars compounded every year. Next year could be, you know, you have to look at the interest and stuff that's going on it and everything else. That's going to compound and could help alleviate a little bit of that red line run there, moving forward. Five, six years ago, we were in the red that we weren't going to make it for two or three years. And so we, that's why we kept doing it. And now you're looking out even more. Sure, it's, we budget revenue wise very conservatively, which is the way you should budget because you never know. Heaven forbid, you could have a war next year and then everything's going to tank. But you need to be able to protect the assets and the people in the city. And I'm not just talking about staff, I'm talking about all the residents, all the businesses, and to help make sure moving forward. So that Casey and Regan and everybody else can know how to plan. If you keep banking it every year, like Regan said, you can't plan anything for the future banking on it. I understand political.
Oh, no, no, yeah, I'm I was going to ask.
So.
If we only pulled, I mean, even if we took this year and then took, decided to take half of last year and then the following year we take the one percent and then take the last half of that, that's a little bit of, and plus it it's going to should look, might look a little more because the assessed value has gone up even though it went down. It might, that might be the way to go right now, just to have that as a extra rainy day fund for that. I mean, yeah, that would be only fifteen thousand, but that fifteen thousand dollars can help with something, I'm sure. Uh I think that could be a way to go.
So what is, so getting back to Casey's question, so that she knows how to prepare to bring back to us um at the end of November for our decision for property taxes. Do we want to move forward? Do you think going with Regan's question, who wants to take them separately? The bank, you want to start with the one percent first? Does council want to go, can we take the one percent and still bank that other year?
We can, we can do that.
Okay. So what, how does council feel?
Can I get another clerk, just to be open to a question? I know I'm talking about the company. So just from what I'm hearing, you say we don't take it for you. I'm not saying we do that, but say thirty thousand dollars to a year, or one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. But is that is that really what we would be looking at if the council decided that they wanted to go back, add that bank back in? Doesn't it just start from?
Yes, but it's instant to them. I would have to.
Right. I think Don was trying to say, like, if we would have taken it, I would have lost thirty. Yeah, sure. Okay, right. So that's if we would have, now it's like a loss, it's like a opportunity cost.
So so each one percent raises your base.
Right.
And so that base stayed down here instead of moved up.
Yeah, but I mean, if we don't take it again, then we're leaving ninety thousand on the table now.
If we were in the red go soon. I think whatever we want to do, however, I think it's actually our responsibility to take it. And do whatever is possible, but we need to ensure disaster, which will kill the city. Which will look a lot bigger than eighty dollars.
We were elected by our constituents to make our decisions. Granted, nobody wants to pay higher taxes. I don't want to pay higher taxes, but I choose to stay on council to help make the decisions on what I feel is best for the city. Not just the residents, but the businesses and everybody that comes in there. The shop, work and play. So you know, everybody's family's growing, inflation's hitting, um but it's inflation's hitting families. It's hitting our businesses, but it's also hitting our city. And we, our city is very conservative in their budgets. And works very hard to keep costs down on a day to day basis, but we're looking at our roads that are just deteriorating, our police costs are going up. We need to make sure and do what's right for our constituents and the businesses and everybody. Sure, it's only sixty thousand dollars. It's eighteen dollars on average for the, and that's eighteen dollars spread across houses, that's not including. So would it be less than eighteen dollars for a house? Because we have to improve commercial owner.
No, that that's based on their.
Okay. Okay, so.
I think people progress in terms that we also live in the city and for the same practices that we.
I think people progress in terms that we also live in the city and for the same purposes that we raise. Yeah, I don't, I want to take it.
The one percent. I'm saying, well, okay.
It, it's, it's a future, it's a long-term decision, not a.
We have to have a motion. No, we just have to give guidance, because we don't vote on it until it comes to the House.
Yeah, and if we continue down this path, then next, next year we would be leaving one hundred and eighty on the table, like it just, like.
Yeah.
It's, it becomes a much bigger number every time we take that.
So, uh, so is there consensus?
There's been, do you recall, I mean, I think the city, it's always kind of been automatic.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We tell them. Yeah, this is the first time we've ever done it, right, so, I don't think, I think it's something probably people live there, they're used to that, so.
It usually got to ten-four percent. I lived here twenty years and I have never noticed.
Inflation goes up in one time. So inflation's going up nine percent, our costs here, the city are going up nine percent, but we are only allowed to raise one percent, so we're losing percent. And then next year, if inflation goes up, what they're saying, six point six percent is what they're estimating, then that means we'd be losing another five point six percent, or if we don't take it, then that's fourteen point six plus what we didn't take last year, so that's our costs are just outweighing the little amount of property taxes we can bring in.
So in addition to, when we talk about that red number, because we wanna address that, when it comes to user fees, programming fees that people charge when you sign up for Parks and Rec or any of those, are we raising those at all? Like, I don't know what the plan is, because I know there's been, like, resistance to raising them.
So it's something we look at each year, I would say during the pandemic, we kind of just raised things, but prior to that, we were reevaluating those each year. We have in times looked at CPI and kind of breathed in around that, but we also have to look at, well, what's the other one for market? Three, go too high, and that's just gonna push everybody else to register for athletic programs and can or offer, and have to stay in the market. Um, so, but we, we'll look at those, I mean, there's been a big jump this last twelve months, um, we did actually raise them some this last year. We'll look at them again, I know that, well, you had a joint meeting, the Park Rec Commission came up about resident, non-resident, and priority registration, and that's, that's something that we'll be looking at at the same time.
Yeah, because I guess I'm just thinking about like raising revenue and going to do that. And with some of those programs, if there is really that high of a demand, there's such a waiting list, it seems like there's probably a little bit of room to help with that, as we're also looking at any other thing, just all the things we're talking about, we're talking about money.
Yeah, and those do go up, I mean, I hear, because I'm in that, that user fee demographic, and people notice when it bump, bump up.
I mean, they.
For sure, I'm not saying, oh, that's what I hear about is user fees, not, not one percent on property taxes, I hear, oh my gosh, it went up ten dollars, you know, to register for software.
And then it's a balance of, you know, making it accessible and equitable, you know, and try to balance all of it.
I just think it's important that we talk about all of our. Then we're showing that we're, you know, business do this, whether we do that, you need to do that, but.
So is there consensus to bring, to have Casey bring that to the future meetings, the potential that they could want to put the bank capacity? Thank you. Yeah.
Um, the other.
It's the first time she's ever asked. I wasn't used to.
I knew this was our topic. Uh, and then I just.
Yeah.
I also did wanna miss, Ethan had a slide that was for SoCo Park, where it had his shortage for that project, and he kind of wanted to try to get some junk on that as well. Um, it went from about three fifty up to about five fifty based on his add, add alternates, um, the shortage, we do have some park reserve funding that's, we have about half a million dollars available if council chose to fully fund that shortage or, um. Chris, if we, can we pull that slide back up? So, you still have that?
I'll add to that too. Because we're in the design page right now, you direction on. It's in the other option. Or if you try to go back. I wouldn't say that we've stopped all the other, we've had to lay it. I guess there's options and risks, but I'd have to add commerce, if you don't have a built project, maybe you could, you could provide a, 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 but I don't know that for sure.
Yeah, I guess we would need to know what our options are for available sources of that funding, to answer that question.
The park reserve.
Is that it? Okay. I heard Casey mention that one, I was looking there.
It's about five hundred and two thousand in there right now.
Okay. So that's just almost all of it. That happens when it's there.
Oh, no, not that one.
Page forty-three or fifty-five. There you go.
There we go. I guess I would say. Just, yeah, just a new conversation around.
I mean, that keeps the project alive and then you're gonna bid it out, and then. If there was in that low end enough, the project would be for them, and then you bring back some, some, that, that, rolling short fifty thousand, that's right.
And we might get lucky and have some impact these, you know, next year that'll help offset that.
So, sorry, you're asking for two hundred and thirty thousand difference?
Uh, at the very bottom, it's three hundred and twenty-seven.
Okay, so you need the three twenty-seven to do the low amount.
It'll come for you for.
Okay, take that out of the park, I, I was thinking you needed the five hundred and fifty-seven thousand.
Well, he might, he might.
Something that's wrong, that there's, there's bids that come in and where it's including that range, um, that could be a kind of a follow-up question at that time.
Okay.
I mean, that's what it's there for, but it pretty much came out. I don't like emptying accounts, but I get it.
And we do have some pending grants, you know, there, we'll see where they land with the state budget next year, but that could add some fan funds back into probably the town center fund, because that's where we get the acquisitions from, but that could go.
So you're asking, if needed, to pull up to three hundred and thirty thousand dollars out of the park?
I think he's asking a clear.
I guess that's for the accounting question of whether you want to move them now in the budget, or?
I'll budget a transfer and then I'll give it to you.
Okay.
Or town center user.
Oh.
No, this is.
So are we saying that we're, we're, we're giving guidance to pull the, pull short, the three hundred and twenty-seven thousand from the parks fund? Not the full amount of the balance of the parks fund?
Or you could do up to a certain amount, say it's four hundred thousand, but after, if it's more than that, you want, you want it dropped back to, you could do something like that.
But that, does that matter at that point?
To say.
I mean, it gets, the way, the way I was proposing is that if, I mean, they're estimating, I'm not sure, but at least we could keep the target moving. We're more likely to be able to keep the target moving forward in some direction, if we're able to, um, the short, the low amount, the lower rate.
Yeah, but it slows it down if they have to come back and ask us again for another, like, seven, five thousand dollars.
Well, I think it would probably be at the time that we brought the approval of the construction contract.
That's true, yeah.
Which we have to bring to you guys.
And then getting approval to report now, at least it's.
Yeah, yeah, it makes sure that we're, we're able to move ahead and not have a decision once we've done all the bidding process and whatnot, find out, oh no, we don't wanna prioritize.
Right, right.
Does council consensus go ahead and authorize that? Or, yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're off to Casey.
Now, any other questions you guys have on the forecast or any of the base budgets?
Do you want us to plug numbers in, we can see what it does to the bottom line stuff?
Are we gonna revisit, are we gonna revisit them? Like, if there's any that?
Well, this would be the option to bring them up, if, if there were.
That message board I would like to see as a, as a funded item, I think it's super important.
I think, I think we should explore other people paying for it before we do.
So we do that message board, right?
Yeah.
We use that, the, the option is, is it worth buying that thing? I think it was. Just by the few thousand a year and renting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it hard to get a hold of them when you're only using them monthly?
Yeah, so that's, that's the challenge.
Everybody else.
Outreach.
Yeah, that's.
That's my wish.
And not having to rent it.
This message board drives you right now and that, it's your doctor.
That's true, that is a very good point, Carla.
I mean, so, and I guess the other question then is, if we, if we were to find it just so that we could hire one, is there an opportunity if down the road, like, hey, you know, I, I don't know how that works to them, for naming rights or, you know, sponsorship to the city? If we could start promoting that idea and then we just give it back to them. And it goes into the general fund again and kind of whatever.
Maybe we could print it out.
We could print it out to, like, the chamber to use.
And to other local communities.
I mean, there's probably a way that.
I still admire.
Carla can do that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't, I guess we just, can see that in the local valley.
Yeah, no, it's definitely a conversation, this is a good, this is a good place to have.
Trying to communicate with our, with the people, that, like, we're ta, we're talking about how they don't see anything, I mean, you can use it for any event, I mean, well, obviously not any event, but you have to go through it on there, but.
I think we get, like, the benefit of it, you know, it's good, and I think, I don't have a decision that, but I think it was, we're, we're spending between two and four thousand a year right now um, to rent, this would obviously give us more easy access to it, we can use it for additional things.
We would use it also, we rent arrow boards also with closed lanes, so this has the ability to put arrows across and just like, so it has more options than just an arrow board, and usually you have two of those, so this would at least, uh, you know, give us more in that regard, and then we would, you know, put in lanes.
And this was a twenty?
Twenty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand, one thousand a year.
There's probably at least.
I thought there was at least ten years, yeah, so I would say. I think it was five grand a year replacement.
It's that much?
Mike.
Five thousand?
It's a thousand.
Oh, thousand.
My question is, okay, if we're gonna use it for messaging, are we only gonna message to people coming in town from the west, or are we gonna message it, I mean?
Well, you'd have to, I, I'm sure we'd have to be strategic, like, whether it be in a park or something like that, or you could have it, you know, at a, at a.
I, that replacement, so we're saying this has a twenty-five year life?
Well, I'm just, I'm just double checking that right now.
It's because, uh, it's only a thousand next year.
I think we're thinking this money more than it's going to let everyone, everyone.
I don't think that's all of it.
It's not. You're gonna take a third of the people.
What kind of?
Right, I realize that.
Repub, repub.
I make you six and one eighty.
We've just used it just for, for construction. We've used it, we rented, technically rented from King County for the Covington days, those ones announcements, we've actually, we've actually utilized there, so anytime you've seen those, uh, and that's the case, on actual construction projects, those are usually the contractor, uh, on that, and it would be just for us, primarily UGM for, like I said, arrow boards, that type of thing.
So we haven't used it for the notice.
No, no, this would be, this would be in addition to that, or having.
For our big announcements, our big events, we put the banners of two seventy-two.
The signs by maybe.
And print my.
I mean. There's our one percent.
Yeah, that's it, that's it.
Yeah, that's easy.
I don't know, I just. I mean, especially because like, we can probably do something fun with it.
Name it.
But just imagine though, sorry, we didn't probably.
This didn't come, this didn't come from me.
Had that, it was sort of each of the street open houses. The street open house, like, if we had that, if we had that in the last couple of weeks, people might have more. But yeah, you don't know, I mean, you don't know what to do. I just, I always feel like, just, it's so, like, important right now, and we, we use Facebook and things, but I feel like that's starting to wear off, like, people are getting numb to some of this stuff.
How much detail can you put on those things? Make it clear what kind of open house you're having, I mean, I get you, but open house, right, it's a big hall. Streets open house, like, I'm not gonna think I wanna go, streets open house.
You have to catch it within ten seconds.
You have to, you're funny about it, last time, we have. Things.
Three.
Things, yeah. So you would have, usually have three lines, three things that you have to tell you about.
I never do.
I know, yeah, yeah.
It's really of something that's portable, it can go anywhere, if there's something specific that where it is. Or if there's something.
Actually, a lot of people. I, I don't. That might be more productive, I do hit all the hot.
Oh, is it right along with the rotary, once it, that just gave me to put on my car, or anything else, but.
So I think, well, well, this one.
Yeah.
I don't think we're digressing at all.
Yeah.
I, I, I just, that was something that I just really.
Yeah, so I think it was a very good conversation, um, so what's on the table right now is twenty-five thousand one time, a thousand dollars ongoing, a thousand dollars.
Actually, the one thousand that's in there is the reduction.
Yeah.
Oh, that's, oh, so, so we weren't funding replacements.
Yeah.
That's, I think that'll work.
Well, I don't see it, I don't know.
But is this the only one that we're considering?
Yeah.
I mean, that's the only one that.
Okay, we got two smiles over on that.
I missed, I missed it, I'm sorry, wasn't that?
How many people wanted to go for this?
Oh.
Not, I'm not, I mean, I read the board.
No, it's, yeah. Yeah, that's.
Here's my, so.
So do we wanna try and find funding to be able to put this back in as a decision card, would this council want, through consensus to put the message board in?
I, I, I agree, obviously.
Yeah. We got two.
If we could sponsor for it, I'd be all for it.
So.
Okay.
I do, well, maybe Valley does it for their fireworks ban, you see it, everybody sees it.
I think we, ultimately, we can talk to people about where they rent, like.
I see it at Maple Valley.
It doesn't, okay, we just, so if we could find enough people that we can bring down our.
I think the question is if we want to.
That would be, um.
That would probably cause more, more work than.
Yes, for sure.
Dawn's gonna be one of them on the record.
I feel like that's a lucky.
You'd have more people asking for us to donate it because our service.
Well, if we do that, I think.
Yeah.
Were there any other ones that, um, council wanted to?
Bernie, uh, does council want to discuss any other undecided decision card this time? Anything else we need?
That's all we have from staff, so unless there's anything else council has, we'll put together what we do here and bring it out.
Council have any other questions or anything?
Dawn, how bad do you want this board?
We already know it.
Do I not want to fix?
I'm gonna try to add to Casey's question on Don's behalf. Just, just because I think they would really enjoy having, right, because of ease of access. It would be really easy for them to access it, put it out for their projects without going through the rental process of King County. Because Carla would really enjoy having it to help get some messaging.
I just started after the vote that there's potentially, there are times when you can't get it, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, if there's an emergency or something like that, when everybody. That's not like. I can't predict when that is, or when, when you can or can't get it.
How often have you not been able to?
I couldn't speak for that, I mean, to be honest with that.
I, I think it's probably.
Versus four rooms.
That may be an opportunity, because we've got ninety-seven. Ninety-four for that, and so if we could get that in last and save some money, then maybe we could.
Knowing that, but I mean, just to say a little bit about that, I talked with, with a number of different people in that regard. Even got Robert, our. Building official involved with that too, just looking at what options are there, because the whole issue with that is having to decode. Is having to do with bringing air intake, fresh air in, and so even if they, they said, well, you'd have to cut like. In each room, like, three more holes into the walls or whatever in each room to bring it, I mean, if you didn't do it the way that they were talking about doing. So, all I'm saying, one of the things, we went back to the contractor or the. Potential contractor is. I asked Adam, and what if, what if there's two rooms, would that be exactly half of those costs, you know, so they're looking into that. That doesn't, that was for four rooms, now they're looking at what that cost would be to two rooms. But that reduces obviously how many rooms are air conditioning and the impact that they have to adjust for that. So, those were just going to be some of those decisions that we were going to bring back, whatever in that regard. So, my, I haven't heard what those numbers are, the initial thing, it's not exactly half, but it would be significantly less. We were at the hundred and forty thousand-ish for four, for four rooms. So, it may be ninety-something thousand if I had to, you know, just.
And that's because of four rooms you can't cover, I mean, I would rather our, we each have AC than outside a massive room.
We'd be okay with two rooms, we only typically occupy two.
The other ones, like, King County would do trainings and stuff like that.
Then we talked about maybe having like potential portable or something like that in one of the other rooms. Does it quite do the same, but at least it helps a little bit, so. Which is what they did for one of the rooms this last year, so. That's a little bit of information on that, I don't have all the information yet back, but we'll definitely share that once I get all of that. And then it's just going to be a decision of, yes, how many rooms, here's what those.
And when will we know that number?
I would imagine probably this week or next week, I would though, I mean, they're, they're pretty responsive.
So we could know before final budget.
We all decide, we decide, it's not worth it, forget it, so it doesn't matter, right? No, 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 I understand that, but I'm saying right now, what we heard was.
It's still unfunded.
It's still unfunded, okay. But not.
But it can change by our vote by December. All right, any other business? Then we will call this special meeting of our budget workshop, oh, adjourned, thank you. Thank you all very much.